The October 4, 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. As a reminder, masks must be worn in all county buildings. Please pause or stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Ms.
Let us be thankful for this day that we have been given, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us to the best of our abilities through collaboration and kindness. Let us seek strength and guidance for each day's duties and problems and be challenged to give our best always together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
Okay, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have four people signed up ahead of time, and after then, if there are others who wish to speak, it will be your turn. Adrian Veltius, Veltuus, my apologies, Jaclyn Batista de Oliveira, Stephen Waddy, and Travis Laurel. So when your microphone is read is the time to speak, because it actually gets recorded better on a record, so for everybody, when your mic's read, it's time to speak. Okay, we have Stephen Waddy first. Please identify yourself, state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Stephen Waddy. I live at 7968 Heather Miss Drive in Severn, Maryland, and I support the prevailing wages of legislation with amendments. But I came here to this discussion as a black realtor, as someone who works with people who live and work in Baltimore City for the most part. I see people who live and work in the city who want to live and work in Anarundel County. But I also see what is limiting their ability to purchase homes here. I have been working with a recently divorced client to find a three-bedroom, two-bath property built after the year 2000 for less than $325,000. It has been next to impossible to find a home at that price. And this person is employed at a major defense contractor here in Anarundel County. I have seen families from Severn to Glen Burnie broken by this pandemic. People have broken under the mental strain, the financial strain, and the physical strain. The people I see struggling at poverty wages are often being met with the indifference of a landlord who wants to take advantage of the nationwide seller's market. I work for some of these landlords as well and have to be the one to give that indifference. I have seen a need for expanded first-time homebuyer assistance funds, a major revision of county zoning that allows multifamily zoning across the county, and a massive need for increased public housing, especially in communities where jobs and transportation are bountiful. On an emergency basis, the pandemic is still raging, and we should not sacrifice workers for the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddy. Mr. Laurel?
Thank you. My name is Travis Laurel, and I live over in Pasadena. I've come here today to speak against the vaccine passports that have been proposed by County Executive Pittman. Now, I don't know if somebody's been watching the news, but it's been an issue in New York, LA, and other cities, where some sort of passport has been proposed, where people have to show ID to eat a cheeseburger in a restaurant, to go shopping, and other things. This, I think, is unfair and un-American. It divides people into two classes, which has historically never worked out terribly well for us. I think this is something that is not an unreasonable expectation, and we'd be better off without it. I urge you all to consider, if this is brought up as a bill or amendment, to consider voting against it.
Thank you. You are dismissed. Do we have Adrian Veltuus? Jaclyn Olviera? Seeing, not seeing them. Okay, anybody else who wishes to speak during the invitation to audience to a subject not on the printed agenda? Ms. Johnson, are you coming down? Well, now's the time. Come to the table if you wish to speak. You can go first, please.
Good evening. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. This, tonight, is a continuation of this saga about people coming before the council saying, "I have this problem. I'm turning to you to ask, is there a legislative approach to resolving these kinds of issues and problems?" And back, way back, long before COVID, I came to you and told you that I had, you know, I was found guilty of committing a terrible infraction, and I was fined $500, and darn it, I was never notified. So, and I, last, you know, at the last council meeting, I told you about, and you've heard it before, you know, you've heard it several times. It turned out that they had mailed the required notice of trial date to Julie Johnson, PO Box blank, and therefore I didn't get it. And then, and it was mailed on December 5 of 2017, and then it was returned to the District Court on December 21, and then it got buried and lost forevermore. If you, you know, I actually sent you an email, so you would have a copy of this fabulous document. So, but how did we get to that point? Well, there was an inspector who talked to somebody who had a complaint, and the inspector went through some steps, and ultimately, he issued a citation. And so you have two pages of this citation thingy, and the most important thing here for the issue is that on this document, there are two places where the inspector could mark witness and/or, no, no or, and affidavit. And there's certainly no crime and not, and no wrongdoing in not filing an affidavit, but he didn't. So as we skip along to another document, it's actually a packet of documents, because the way this procedure works is that when the inspector has decided that I'm just hopeless, he asks, you know, for the Office of Law to take over and take me to court. And, oh darn, two minutes have gone already?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Aw, jeez.
We'll see you again soon.
Wait till next week, what happens next? Come again, and it's wonderful to have a crowd like this with all of their own issues.
And Mr. Dull, I believe?
Yes, ma'am. David Dull, 534 Heavy Tree Hill, Severn Park, Maryland, Chairman of the Anarundel County Libertarians. I've spoken before about decorum and treating each other with respect. I wanted to go through a few comments that were made by Mr. Pittman on September 14. He claims that those of us who trust the science and the doctors are working on our behalf, you know, there are scientists and doctors who say otherwise from what Mr. Pittman is saying, and I would appreciate it if he respected our views as well and the reviews of other doctors and scientists that disagree, and I don't appreciate that gaslighting. Said vaccine people are losing patients, so the 20%, 20% are losing, are angry as well, and division is rampant. Well, the division comes from the government telling us what we have and have not to do. If you just didn't do that, then we can make our own decisions, and we wouldn't be divided. He says that the anti-vaccine staff expressed outrage. I think he means to say the anti-government mandate staff. Nobody's against the vaccines. I've been vaccinated by many, for many things, like I'm not against vaccines. We're against the government, the seven of you, or at least the four of you, the furious four, telling us how we're going to live our lives. He says he could have played hardball, just as he played hardball with the three county execu, or county council members. That's, that's you guys, the heroes, that are standing up to this. Well, first of all, I'd like to tell him, go ahead and play hardball. Like, I'm ready. Like, I don't want, I don't need this. But ceremoniously introduce resolutions in opposition to our public health efforts throughout the pandemic. Well, first of all, ceremoniously, I mean, you guys voted to censor Trump. Like, you're city council in Anarundel County, and you voted to censor the president. That's, that's pretty ceremonious to me. But in opposition to our public health efforts throughout the pandemic, like, no, 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 in opposition to authoritarian assaults on our civil liberties.
Thank you, Mr. Dull. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of September 20, 2021.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Lacy at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Fiedler. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in the Arundel Center in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 20, 2021?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
Is there a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of September 20, 2021, stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 8321, an emergency ordinance concerning zoning, general provisions, uses and structures, temporary uses. Bill number 8421, an ordinance concerning approval of lease of county-owned property to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Annapolis and Anarundel County, Inc. Bill number 8521, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public facilities, public schools. Bill number 8621, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, tax credits, public safety officer property tax credit. Bill number 8721, an ordinance concerning licenses and registrations, amusements, commercial bingo, and alcoholic beverages.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 5021, resolution appointing a charter revision commission. Resolution number 5121, resolution designating Ellen Moss as the representative for the county council on the DC Metroplex BWI Community Roundtable.
Thank you. Now, may I please have a motion to suspend Rule 5106 so that we may change the order this evening and hear and vote on Resolution number 4921 first?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the rule to suspend Rule 5106 and change the order so that Resolution number 4921 can be heard and voted on first.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule 5-106 and change the order so that Resolution number 4921 can be heard and voted on first has been adopted.
We will also be voting on Resolution numbers 5021 and 5121 at the end of the meeting. Now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 4921.
Resolution number 4921, resolution in support of a replacement bridge at the current crossing of the William Preston Lane Jr. Memorial Bridge, otherwise known as the Chesapeake Bay Bridge.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your resolution here on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this resolution came after, or is more like a follow-up to the previous resolution that this council passed in June. That, that resolution asked for a pause in the trajectory of the current study. What I was concerned with after that passage was that we were just going to further delay progress in getting traffic moving on the Route 50 corridor, and especially on our local roads in communities that are jammed up for hours on end. So discussions have taken place in the last few months in an effort to find common ground with our neighbors on the eastern shore, the opposite landing side of the Bay Bridge to our location here in Anarundel County. And what we have discussed is that we know that we have serious issues over two bridges that exist. We know that one span is 20 years old, or 20 years past its 50-year life expectancy, and one just reached its life expectancy. A third span anywhere in the county or in the state really is going to just kick the can, because we will end up with two aged bridges that require millions of dollars in maintenance every year for drivers to be safely transported or get from one point to another. We know now that in the future, there will be a 21-mile study of the entire corridor, and we know that there are backups out of season for a myriad of reasons, from maintenance, broken-down cars, safety, emergency responses. In a perfect world, we would be able to replace both existing bridges and have a third location or an additional location somewhere else that took some relief off of this area, but we're, we have to deal in reality, and there is not going to be the available funds at state or federal level to do both. So how do we move forward? We move forward by working with our neighbors across the bridge and saying that this is what we can support moving forward, and letting our state and federal leaders know that this is what the two jurisdictions can support, but asking them to move forward with their study, get the ball rolling, and get our roads clear so that residents can have some normalcy again in their life and not be held hostage in their homes and away from their children for hours on end. So I do ask for the support of my colleagues this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I am joined by our DCAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Transportation Director, Mr. Ramon Robinson, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. As Councilwoman Fiedler stated, this is an important issue, and a lot of work has happened since we last discussed this in front of this body with, I believe it was Resolution 3221. Doesn't feel like it was in 2021, but it was. So last month, the county executive and the governor had a, had a very productive call. The county executive has, and his team has met with several council members, particularly Councilwoman Fiedler, as well as Councilwoman Radvian, Delegate Bagnell, and some members of local governments from across the bay who are, who are here now, and as well as Director Ports and community leaders. The C sent a letter to the members of the Broadneck Council of Communities that recently articulated our position. I believe a number of you were CC'd on that. Happy to provide copies to the full council if you would like. As you know, we challenged the plan to build a third span without addressing Route 50 corridor traffic flow. It was those comments and the council resolution I referenced earlier that we believe helped move us forward. The county executive believes that we can create a plan that replaces the eastbound span and addresses traffic in the corridor. If state, local governments and residents go into Phase 2 of the NEPA study, working together, we know we can develop a plan that addresses the traffic and the quality of life issues and protects our natural, natural environment. Administration supports the, the resolution in front of you. One issue we do have and we would like to flag with this resolution is that it prescribes an eight-lane bridge. We believe that is exactly what the NEPA Phase 2 study should determine. We do know it needs to be more than two lanes. So with that, we're comfortable with the resolution. I just wanted to put that on the record, and, and the team here is free to add anything or we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from my colleagues?
Madam Chair, just a follow-up.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, and I have appreciated the ongoing conversations from this, the entire staff, really, it feels like, as well as our folks who are here tonight from Queen Anne's County. For those of you in the audience, I don't, I don't think I fully explained what this resolution is. It essentially says that this council and Queen Anne's Council, if we pass this resolution this evening, would support a replacement of the two current spans of the bridge that is in existence with at least eight lanes. And I've had some questions about the eight lanes, so I'll just fill you in with this. In our discussions with Queen Anne's County and what we see for the future, three lanes eastbound and three lanes westbound would take care of what is now being done with the contraflow. Those are the cones that go out and shut down a lane, so one, one area can have three lanes going whichever direction they need to. That would address that immediately. The fourth lane could potentially allow for a variety of options in the future, and these options and all of these details are what we need to figure out or what the powers above us need to figure out in the, in the next study that really needs the support of this council in order to begin. And those options could be anything from an HOV lane, a biker lane, a local-use-only lane, or potential use for traffic buildup that needs some relief, and we open it up to four. But all of those details, again, will be figured out in the next phase of the study, which really needs the support of, of both jurisdictions in order for the state and federal government to move forward. So I appreciate the work. I understand what you said, Mr. Barron, and I think, I think we're moving in the same direction overall, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Radvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. I just want to say thank you to my colleague from District 5 for taking this on, and also just my appreciation for the, the ideas that could go with a fourth lane. In District 6, which is Annapolis, we are impacted by the traffic as well. Traffic frequently backs up all the way to Exit 24, and people will try and use Waze and Google Maps and whatnot to navigate way there through neighborhood streets and use one of the other bridges besides the Route 50 bridge. So we have skin in this game as well, and I appreciate the possibility of having, you know, a transit option for that fourth lane. You know, Bus Rabbit Transit, I, you know, I would love the idea of a beach train. Take, take the train all the way to Ocean City. But I think the fourth lane really just has lots of possibilities, and my colleague mentioned a few, and I think that's, that's a, that's a wise thing to include, so thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution number 4921. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive three submissions using the online tool. We also received one email that had a letter attached. All of this has been shared with the entire council and added to the record.
Thank you. And now we'll have our in-person public hearing. I have seven people signed up in advance, so I'll start with those seven. And the first four, we'll just have four people down here at the microphones, please. Bruce Bariano, Jim Moran, Raymond Cleland, and Britt Griswold. Please make sure your microphone has a red light on before you're speaking, and then state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes. Mr. Bariano?
Good evening. For the record, Bruce Bariano, registered lobbyist for Queen Anne's County, Maryland. I would like to defer to Commissioner Jim Moran, who's done a lot of yeoman work on this matter. I'm here accompanying him as, as my client. I represent the county commissioners in Queen Anne's County. Just would like to thank not only the Queen Anne's County Commissioners, but particularly Councilwoman Fiedler. There's been a lot of yeoman work, working also with the county executive. It's really wonderful to see this collaboration and cooperation across the shores and really grappling with something that's got to be given attention. It cannot be ignored or kicked down the road, so this resolution's good, and it will keep the momentum going for a resolution down the road, and thank you all very much. I'll then defer to Commissioner Moran.
Thank you, Commissioner Moran. Please state your name and address or your official address for the record, if you will.
My name is Jim Moran. I'm the at-large county commissioner for Queen Anne's County. It's been that position for the last eight years. I reside in 329 Y Harbor Drive in Queenstown, Maryland. I am here to support Resolution 4921, and I also brought a copy of our resolution, 21-17, that pretty much states and mirrors what, what your resolution is, and I brought that for the council as our little gift to the council. And I would like to piggyback on what Bruce said. Councilwoman Fiedler has been instrumental in, in our meetings, and same with County Executive Pittman. And it's, it's been a learning experience for all of us. I've been in this battle for eight years with the state. As you know, everybody goes to the beach Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but they all come home Sunday. And even with a three-lane bridge, we set a record this year, 17-mile backup. And you just don't hear about it because it's the eastern shore. And it was over four years ago, we put up cameras, and we're counting traffic getting on the bridge, getting off the bridge at the 5301 split, key points in Queen Anne's County, and in the summertime, it's less than 5% of that traffic is Queen Anne's County's traffic. So I totally understand what's going on in the Broadneck Peninsula. It's not their traffic. It's not our traffic. It is beach traffic, and you need to address that issue, and it's just not going to go away. So, you know, the, the time that we can, to do something is now, because this, Phase 1 of this NEPA is going to designate this quarter, hopefully, as a replacement for these bridges that are aged, and nothing's been done in the last 50 years. And, you know, I, I want to say, you know, a little gratitude to Governor Hogan for picking up that ball, and it's a heavy one, to start this process. But what we need to do in our collaboration is make sure that Phase 2 of the NEPA gets funded. If it doesn't get funded, it dies. So, you know, we need to keep our foot on the gas, because without this funding, without moving forward, and the next one's four to five years, who knows if we'll ever see a bridge? And it's, it is a death sentence to Queen Anne's County, as I sure, I'm sure it is to the Broadneck Peninsula, to property values and quality of life. So, you know, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, or, but once again, thank you for engaging in this, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Cleland, Cleland? Go ahead.
Ray Cleland, 1146 St. Cathen Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. I am the president of Ironworkers Local 5. We've built the bridge in the '70s, the one, and we also worked on the other. I can tell you that it needs work done to it. 20 years' life expectancy is what they're saying. I'd say it's a close call there, but I'm, we're definitely for this. I think that it will definitely help traffic. Obviously, I live in Cape St. Clair, which is right there at the bridge. I know how it means to have the traffic, so the overflow of being able to move people along quicker definitely will help. I just wanted to let you know that we're here in support of everything that your calls.
Thank you, Mr. Cleland. Mr. Griswold?
Britt Griswold, 823 Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland. I live on the Broadneck. I hate to be the skunk at the party. Now is not the time for this resolution. While it may not be intended, the resolution guarantees the selection of the Route 50 corridor as a single final corridor of the only future bridge to cross the bay. The support and approval of this resolution will have the inevitable impact of eliminating the consideration and analysis of any other corridor in the state. This resolution passed at this time will impact the county's and others' ability to negotiate with the project sponsors, the M- negotiate with the project sponsors, the MDTA and the Federal Highway Administration. The project sponsors would just nullify any concerns the county has about the selection of this corridor with this resolution. This resolution is a complete position reversal of the county council Resolution 3221 approved last June. This earlier resolution promoted a revision of the state's proposed NEPA results with further consideration of factors that support a new bridge located outside of Anaronda County. If the state were to settle on a new bridge outside Anaronda County, the current bridge would see traffic relief right away when it's built, and still be viable, according to the studies, for another 44 years. This would be the time enough for proper consideration of what should replace the current bridges with an alternate route now in the mix. We have a full systems failure with our bridges and corridor. And right now, the most appropriate resolution for our county is to request to speed up all plans to manage and improve the handling of traffic issues we have with our current bridges and the surrounding corridors, which will be with us, these problems, for five to 10 years, no matter what the state decides to do. I urge the county council to hold off on this resolution until the Federal Highway Administration returns their guidance. And short-circuiting that process, I believe, would result, could result in a bad decision on our part at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold.
I believe it's a bad choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jacqueline Batista de Oviera. I hope I've said your name correctly. It's on here a lot. I still don't see you standing up. Okay. William Neville and David Humphries.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Bill Neville. Reside at 1612 Laurel Lane in Amberly. Been a resident for 28 years. Worked 30 years for the major engineering and planning firm, one of the largest in the United States. Worked on a number of NEPA studies. Served on Anaronda County boards, commissions, including the BRAG Committee. And I hope you have had an opportunity to look at the written material I've submitted, because I cannot go through that kind of detail now. The subject is complex, and it really needs to be vetted considerably through the county before we make this decision. The resolution supports the selection of the Route 5301 corridor as a single final corridor for a minimum eight-lane, probably 10-lane bridge. This is a complete position reversal of council Resolution 3221 approved in June. That earlier resolution demanded a revision of the DEIS, Draft Environmental Impact Statement, with the consideration that a new bridge location be selected outside of Anaronda County. Four key concerns. Execution of the resolution will result in an increase in traffic for decades for an eight-lane bridge, or the support of the approach roads that will require the same amount of lanes. It will be good for a handful of years, and then it will deteriorate, because it depends upon land development. For every unit, we have 10 trips per day as an average. Put in 100, put in 1,000, you can see we fill the lanes up. The approval of the resolution will eliminate consideration of any other corridor in the state, which the previous resolution directed it happen. We desperately need another artery. The corridor selection is premature. We don't know what the final environmental impact statement will be presented. Why commit to something that we don't know anything about? We need to focus on the next five years? That's not a NEPA issue.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. I appreciate it. Mr. Humphries.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is David Humphries. I reside at 788 Moore Circle in Stevensville for the past three years. For the past 27 years, I was a member of this county, living in Annapolis. I am a professional transportation engineer with over 50 years of experience. I have planned cities and major traffic control systems throughout the world and throughout this nation. This is a huge mistake to make this resolution now. Mr. Neville, myself, and our dear friend who has just passed on, Dick Lad, have worked for five to six years on trying to correct what the state has done, most inadvertently, as far as this study goes, in the Tier One. Bill has covered some of the points. The one point I want to cover is this organization known as Anaronda County and Queen Anne's County were cut out of the critical stakeholders throughout this whole process. You never had a word to say. Neither did Queen Anne's County. And not much has gone on there in conversation. The reality is that you will be cut out again, because what are you going to do? When do you think that bridge is going to be built? When do you think there's going to be traffic relief? You measure that in decades. That's the reality of it. There are something called intelligent transportation systems. It's been around since the late '80s, early '90s. I was with NASA at that time, and we invented those technologies. The reality is, you must press hard to get that type of monitoring and control of traffic, in particular on Ken Island. The rest of Queen Anne's County is jammed up, but Ken Island has no alternatives. The reality is, if you pass a resolution like this, you're yielding to the state to do as they wish. So I am in opposition to my own county council's resolution and your county council resolution as a professional engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. All right. Do we have anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 4921? If so, please come down to the table now. Ms. Lynch, if you're ready, you can go first.
Thank you. My name is Pat Lynch. I'm president of the Broadneck Council, and I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. I am a 10-year member of the Bay Bridge Reconstruction Advisory Group. I represented the Broadneck Peninsula on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the 2040 Development, General Development Plan. And I wish to speak tonight on Resolution 4921 submitted by Amanda Fiedler on the Bay Bridge build options. My position is a little bit different. My position on this resolution is that we need this commitment, supported by the county council, to be sure that the traffic needs regarding the Broadneck corridor are secured and that the resolution is promoted by our elected officials. I am in support of two Bay Bridges, one outside of Anaronda County that we residents of the Broadneck Peninsula testified in favor of during all those meetings, requesting testimony from members of the public for input into the NEPA Tier One DIS. We strongly promoted the alternate option, not alternate seven, but outside of Annapolis to draw the traffic away from the Broadneck Peninsula. Currently, our recommendations are under evaluation by the Federal Highway Administration as they perform their final review on the options for a third Bay Bridge under the EPA mandates, and decision is expected in midwinter. I'm also in support of a very badly needed replacement bridge for the old inadequate 52 two-lane bridge that is 20 years over its build plan. A new, wider replacement bridge built to 100-year build plan must be built. The estimate to this bridge to build it is $6 to $8 billion in today's money. Any new replacement bridge is going to take 20 to 40 years to bridge, to build, unless there is an emergency effort made. We need a solution now that is safe, well-planned, and funded. The current old span will be monitored by traffic engineers for safety, but knowing that this is the only eastbound crossing that will be available during the next 20 years, we have no choice. But to ensure that all travelers will have the use of this crossing as an essential part of transport from Anaronda County to the eastern shore of Maryland for the next 20 to 40 years, a replacement bridge should be much less complex to build in a short period of time than a new and additional bridge north or south of Anaronda County.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
We can replace our bridge one at a time.
Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I do not have the expertise that the engineers and some of these other folks do have. However, back in the '90s, I was reading the newspaper about a, it was the Baltimore Sun and the Washington Post. There had been a convention over in Ocean City of the planners for the state. And one of the big topics was how are they going to address the problems of the people fleeing, you know, the Atlantic coast as sea level rises? And they were talking about refugees, you know, from the beach and the shorelines. Now, I realize a lot of slug going to the beach, but if everybody's fleeing because it's no longer habitable, these are serious concerns. And some of you know about how there's an iceberg in Greenland where, last year, during COVID anyway, there was an 80-foot melt in this glacier from the bottom up, and no one had anticipated that kind of melting. There's a major glacier that's got a big crack off the Antarctic. There's all kinds of crazy stuff going on. There's too much we don't know. But, you know, some of this sounds like, you know, that in the federal bill, we want to build new airports and so on and so forth, but since we need to cut back on greenhouse gases, well, we shouldn't be fine. You know, but we're going to pour the money in both places? You know, I ask you to think hard, and I don't know the answers, but I don't know if you've been thinking about these issues with the incredible environmental problems we're facing. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The public hearing on Resolution Number 4921 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4921 as amended.
Resolution Number 4921: Resolution in Support of a Replacement Bridge at the Current Crossing of the William Preston Lane Jr. Memorial Bridge, Otherwise Known as the Chesapeake Bay Bridge.
All right, we got ahead of ourselves there. The resolution has not been amended yet. Is there any further discussion before we go to that amendment? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just wanted to say, as we're looking through this resolution, I think one really important piece of this is the Tier Two study that the resolution says really must be done quickly. Councilwoman Fiedler mentioned that there would be a 21-mile study, and I think that's really critical. When we discussed the previous resolution, one of the concerns that I know I had, that I know a number of constituents had as well, was the approaches are really critical, right? Shifting the bottleneck from the bridge a mile down the road doesn't do much good. So considering those approaches is really kind of a critical piece to this. And I just want to, I'm very excited that that piece is in here, that the second piece of the study is specifically called out in here for that 21-mile consideration. And thank you to Councilwoman Fiedler for really tackling this.
Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, for the benefit of the public, too, I know there's some folks here that normally don't attend council meetings. A resolution is a statement. It does not provide any action. So I want to repeat that, that a resolution is a statement by the council. Queen Anne's did the same thing. Ultimately, I know this has been an ongoing issue. The governor and obviously our delegates, House of Delegates and Senate ultimately decide on kind of where things go. So I just want to make that clear. Again, we're making a statement if this does pass on behalf of the council. That's what a resolution is. It does not force anyone to do anything. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
Yes, I just really quickly, as a summary of thoughts. Resolution 3221, as was mentioned in my opening statements and here this evening, was a point in time when we were discussing a third span. And as I said, a third span at the current location would be used in conjunction with one bridge that is 70 years old, so 20 years past its life expectancy, and another that has just reached that. And yes, we could maintain for another 44 years the existing bridges. But I just want to remind everyone that last winter, we did, the state, I should say, did a major redecking project on one of those spans, and it created miles-long backups on both shores. And that would be a regular occurrence if we did not address the aging two spans in their current location. So just wanted to state that for my colleagues, if you had any questions on that. So thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to that amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment adds recipients of a copy of the resolution.
Ms. Fiedler, would you like to make a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I doubt there needs to be any discussion. Speak up if you want to discuss this amendment. If not, okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volpe.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacey.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Is there any further discussion on Resolution 4921 as amended? Ms. Radveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this might be a question for the sponsor or possibly the administration. I'm hearing from some of the testimony from, I'm sorry, I don't remember the names, but the last several gentlemen, the professional engineers who spoke about this. I'm not understanding this resolution to be in place of the concept of a third span that could be elsewhere, but I think rather acknowledging the importance of making sure that our infrastructure that connects Anaronda County and the western shore and the eastern shore connects those two pieces. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think we could acknowledge the need that our bridges, you know, the bridges that we use right now are old, deteriorating, and need to be replaced, and that if we're going to replace them, let's replace them with something that more adequately meets our needs. But I don't see that as mutually exclusive of a third span that we would desire to be elsewhere. And I just want to check in with the sponsor, or I guess actually, the sponsor's probably the appropriate person to ask that question to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will tell you that the current study is looking at one bridge. So whether that be a third span in another location or an entire replacement, if it's in another location, if the final study determines that the location isn't where the current two spans are, it's elsewhere, then we're going to have ongoing issues with the current spans and their age. If they determine that the current location of the current spans, which is what this resolution discusses, Queen Anne's County and Anaronda County and joint resolutions are saying, yes, span here, but only if it is a replacement span, because we would just end up in the same predicament 20 years from now, if not sooner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Volpe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know who this is a question for. The statements that a couple people have made, that Resolution 3221 is diametrically opposed to what we're doing here, I can sort of see that, because in reading 3221, it says that we were opposing the completion of the Tier One study for a third span without further review. But then in this resolution, we're saying, end the Tier One study and allocate sufficient resources to Tier Two. So maybe I can just get a little clarification on why it is that we did that previously and now we're accelerating and saying disregard what we did before.
Madam Chair, thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. It's not really a disregard. It's a picking up where we left off, because what that resolution that we passed stated was to essentially pause the study. We weren't really active, and we weren't really active participants in the discussion. The passage of that resolution created more in-depth conversations with the entities and the elected officials who are currently dealing with and trying to mitigate traffic concerns from our constituents. So that resolution still very much stands. A third span should not go in this location. A replacement span would be supported. And we can only get to that determination if we move on to the second study. And closing Resolution 3221, saying, "Don't move forward with the study," puts us in a period of non-progress.
May I follow up? Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate that, Councilwoman Fiedler. That was helpful. Just to understand correctly, so if we move out of the Tier One study regarding the third span, and we say we're okay to advance to Tier Two on the replacement span, and we say we're okay to advance to Tier 2 on the replacement span, is it your understanding that the state and the federal government will cease everything in Tier 1 in terms of the looking for a place for a third span? Is that conversation ending?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I can't speak for those agencies, but we are supporting in this resolution a final environmental impact statement. And following this in news, you can kind of see the direction that the state is pushing for and is going. I would assume that is because they realize that there is going to be a future traffic challenge with the aging bridges. But again, I can't speak for those government folks who are part of the study. Yep.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4921 as amended.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution Number 4921 as amended is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6821 as amended.
Bill Number 6821, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control Authority to Empound Tethering of Dogs.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the table is Team Dog from Animal Care and Control, Ms. Robin Catlett from our police department, Captain Adams from the Office of Law, Mr. Ritter. Thank you, Council. There's been a lot of discussion on this bill, as you recall. We held the bill at the September 7th meeting and amended it at the previous meeting on the 20th. We appreciate council members working with the admin to get the bill in its current form. We are comfortable, we are ready for this bill to pass tonight, and we stand ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And do any of my colleagues have questions at this time? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. I really just want to thank the administration, Ms. Catlett, and the other representatives who've been working on this bill for, you know, trying to address my concerns in a way that I hope we all find agreeable. So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Volke, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. More of a comment than a question. I'm going to support this bill, but I'm going to say this to you all, I'm trusting you, because this bill makes me nervous, makes me very nervous. I think that the way that it's written gives a lot of discretion to our animal care and control officers. I think that they will exercise that discretion appropriately. I sincerely do. But that being said, I hope that we're not having to come back in the future, because we're hearing from constituents who are saying this is being used in a way that it wasn't intended. But I hear you loud and clear when you say how you intend to use it, so I'm hopeful that that's what we'll see in practice. If not, I'm sure we'll be back.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6821 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive three submissions online that have all been shared with the council and added to the record.
Thank you. We do have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Olveira, whose name I keep mispronouncing, I'm sure, and that's why she's not responding, or she's not here. Okay, we'll take it that way. Anybody else who wishes to speak on Bill 6821 as amended, please come to the table now? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 6821 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6821 as amended.
Bill Number 6821, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control Authority to Empound Tethering of Dogs.
Is there any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6821 as amended.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6821 as amended is passed.
Cookies for the dog team. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7221.
Bill Number 7221, An Ordnance Concerning Purchasing Capital Improvement Contracts, Prevailing Wage and Local Hiring.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I have a couple of people making their way up here. We have our budget officer, Mr. Trumbauer, Director of Central Services, Ms. Anderson is around, our procurement officer, Mr. Heim, is here, our DPW director, Mr. Phipps, is with me, as well as Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. The administration is excited to bring this bill before you this evening. Want to thank the cosponsors of Bill 72-21. Bill 7221 establishes prevailing wage and local hiring requirements for county capital projects valued over $250,000 or which utilize over $5 million in county funds. A prevailing wage is the basic hourly rate of wages and benefits paid to similar workers within an area. It covers skilled tradesmen, construction workers, and ensures that the men and women who build our county are entitled to a fair pay for a fair day's work. Bill 7221 bases the county's prevailing wage rates on the rates established annually by the Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation for state-funded construction contracts in the county at the time of the award of the capital improvement project. In addition to requiring prevailing wage, 7221 establishes a local hire provision for new employees on large county projects. Contractors must use best efforts to fill at least 51% of new jobs required to complete the capital improvement contract or capital project with county residents. Research has shown that prevailing wage laws boost worker productivity, reduce industry injury rates, and increase apprenticeship training, which helps address the shortage of skilled labor in construction. Prevailing wage laws benefit workers and their communities by encouraging training, reducing injuries, promoting healthcare coverage, minimizing disruption to local labor markets, ensuring that minority and female workers receive prevailing wages, ensuring participation in apprenticeship programs. Local hire requirements also help keep local dollars here, benefiting local businesses and the local economy, and create more jobs. So it's a big bill, it's a complicated bill. The team here stands ready to answer any questions. And Mr. Phipps, or if anybody would like to add any comments, please feel free.
I guess that's my cue. Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I think just from my perspective, managing the delivery of the capital program, it's important that we have, you know, a highly skilled workforce. And being surrounded, enveloped by jurisdictions that have prevailing wage rate laws and regulations puts us at a significant competitive disadvantage. And I think that, you know, there's a pull in the labor market to attract, those counties are going to attract the higher skilled workers than we are. And it's also, that was referenced in the State General Assembly's 2014 study, where they referenced a couple of studies that actually spoke to this, the advantage of having higher skilled workers, and that if it is a 2% to 15% increase in cost estimated, that is more than offset by the efficiency gains with the higher skilled workforce. So that's what I'd like to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Do any of the cosponsors wish to speak on the bill? If not, I'll open it up to questions from the council. Mr. Volke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Phipps, how long have you been Director of Department of Public Works?
It's been since 2013.
Okay, so nine years? Give or take? Eight or nine?
Yep.
Okay. How many capital programs have you ever seen and brought online in this county?
How many capital programs?
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess prior to that, I was chief engineer since 2001, so...
You've been here a long time.
20 years there, yeah.
Okay. So how many of those projects have been built that you feel have been built with substandard labor in this county?
I don't, this, that's not, I have no way to, there isn't a pool of apples-to-apples comparisons for me to draw a conclusion on that, because I, you know, absent building the same project with prevailing wage and the same project without prevailing wage, I really can't comment on that.
Okay. And are there any projects in this county that you think we need to readdress because they were built without prevailing wage, so we now look at them and think they need to be replaced because they weren't up to snuff?
I can't, just similar to the previous response I gave, I can't, I'm not in a position to articulate that. But like I indicated, the 2014 task force, in fact, referenced a couple of professional studies that spoke to the advantage of having prevailing wage and its impact on higher skilled workers, which leads to improved efficiency. So I just have to, based on that evidence, my conclusions on that evidence.
So then my last question to you will be, are there any projects in this county that you think we could have built more efficiently with prevailing wage in the time that you've been in this county over the last 20 years? And if so, can you identify them?
I'm not in a position to do that. I think that, you know, because I don't know when the other jurisdiction, what I'm saying is that we are in a competitive disadvantage with our surrounding neighbors who all have prevailing wage rates. And so, you know, just follow the workers.
Mr. Phipps and everybody else on the panel, and I suppose for all of us, I've just been flagged with a reminder that we should all make sure we say our names for the clarity of the record, because I think, you know, our masks muffle things a little bit, so it will be helpful to our minute takers. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. This question actually is for Madam Auditor. In the blue letter that we received, there's a note here that total project costs, if we're looking at the FY '22 budget, which was just started in July 1, total project costs, if this bill passes, could increase by as much as $37 million for the projects that are in the FY '22 budget. And so my question to Madam Auditor is, if that $37 million had been added into the FY '22 budget, and then again in the out years, would that put us over debt affordability?
Michelle Belair, County Auditor. I think based on the current budget and capital program, if no other changes were made, then an increase of $37 million per year would get the county to the debt affordability limits more quickly than the current program, because it would add more per year.
Would we be over the debt affordability limit, assuming there's no other changes to the capital program?
Debt affordability is a bunch of different metrics. So we look at over a period of time what would get us more close to those limits that were, they're raised over the years and different periods. So to say in one year we would pass it, it's an average per year, looking at that. But generally, we're spending to a level that the county is comfortable with without going over. So to add $37 million per year would increase that, to get closer to those limits. So like the, there's different limits based on different metrics. So as the revenue increases that percentage, but I think that the guidance, and I would have to probably get some additional information, it's 11.5, I think, was the one, but we know that we can't reach, we can't go beyond that limit. So that's a relatively recent change to increase to that amount. So it's each year, if you continue that spend in the out year, that's why there's different scenarios and assumptions when we do the budget work. So I think when you look at those averages per year, it's an amount that couldn't sustain an additional $37 million increase to stay within affordability over a period of time.
Okay, we could not sustain it. Is that what you just said, over time?
With no other changes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So, Mr. Phipps, you estimated or stated that a study of some sort noted that an increase in cost of 2% to 15% can be expected, but members of the council received an email from the president of a local contracting company who said that he does work with jurisdictions that have the prevailing wage rate requirements, and he said that those projects cost the owner 25% to 30% more, and that's a pretty large discrepancy in increase of cost. So if you could clarify where that 2% to 15% came from?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I didn't prepare the 2% to 15%, but I have to believe some of it is that labor is only a percentage of the overall project cost. So there's still equipment, materials, and things like that that need to be delivered. So the 15%, if that's what we're talking about, 2% to 15, is the total project cost, of which labor is a certain percentage. If that makes sense?
Madam Chair, ma'am. Hello?
Yes, ma'am. So I think we're talking a little bit about two different things. So this is a contracting company that deals with jurisdictions currently that have the prevailing wage requirement compared to Anarundel County right now, that does not have the prevailing requirement, wage rate requirement. Comparing the two with similar projects, 25% to 30% more in cost in those jurisdictions versus cost here in Anarundel County. I just, I'm not comfortable with the large discrepancy in cost and some of the other concerns.
Councilwoman Fiedler, if I may. Pete Barron with the administration. I believe the studies that were referenced was from the General Assembly's fiscal and policy note on a state bill. I haven't seen the letter from that particular contractor, so I don't think we can explain why they would claim such a large discrepancy. But the Department of Legislative Services that provided that review, I think is a pretty professional body and did a good job of aggregating the various academic sources on that.
Mr. Trumbauer, Mr. Light earlier, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. On this particular question, so our office, the Budget Office, prepared the fiscal note. The range 2% to 15% came from a number of different surveys and research over the past couple of years. One of them, I think, was by the school system, as Mr. Barron mentioned. Some of them were from the state legislative effort. So there's really, there's really no way to give you a precise number. We don't know to what percent is this going to increase cost. We know that it will increase cost. That's in the fiscal note. But the reality is that costs are going up anyway. Labor costs go up every year, so that's something that we, that this council and this administration have to be prepared for. And that's related to a point that I wanted to make regarding council members, Hare's question, I think, about how much, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your point now.
It was the debt affordability?
The debt affordability, right, I'm sorry. The budget doesn't work that way, so, you know, we deliberate on the departmental requests in the CIP. It's a months-long project, and constantly DPW is updating us on the construction cost estimates and other external factors. So we know the debt affordability limit. We hone in on a capital request that is within that limit. So if projects cost more, that will be incorporated into the ultimate CIP. So we will not add an amount of money to the CIP and go over the debt affordability limit. That's not how we do it.
Thank you. Mr. Volke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow up, Nathan Volke, sorry for the record, to follow up on the questions that Councilwoman Fiedler was asking. So the study that you're referencing in the state, you said it was 2014, right?
It sounds correct.
Okay. So we've got a seven-year-old study that says that it's 2% to 15%, and then we have a contractor who actually does the work in other jurisdictions and is telling us that it's a 25% to 30% increase, and it's the position of the administration that we should disregard that and go with the seven-year-old number from DLS of 2% to 15%. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I think as our Budget Officer stated, when they prepared the fiscal note, we looked at a number of studies. I'm not saying we should discount any piece of information, what, Pete Barron, for the record, that when we are looking at what the costs here are, and you see in a study that was produced by, I think it was Pinnacle Economics, that there are other factors that are brought in, additional revenue to the county from, say, local hire provisions or increased efficiency, which will... which will help our projects be done better or last longer. So I think it's, what you're hearing here is, the academic research is very mixed on whether it is 1% because so many factors go in, not just labor costs.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the questions from my colleagues regarding this bill. I think it's important, as we all talk about, the reason we're bringing this bill forward is to make sure we're paying fair wages for a fair day's work. We know from our neighboring large counties that we're the donut hole, and we're the ones that don't have the prevailing wage law, which we're shortchanging our own residents. This bill also brings in a local hire provision, which makes sure that we are building our capital infrastructure here in Anarundel County with at least some Anarundel County tradespeople. It also encourages apprenticeships, which we know there's a growing desire and a growing need for skilled tradesmen and women in our general economy, not just here in Anarundel County, but across the country. We also know that labor costs are not the biggest concern currently to building infrastructure, it's material costs, and they're the most volatile, which are going to have the largest effect on our CIP over the next few years, based on the economy, both here locally and nationally, well, internationally for that matter. I'll leave the economist word for my husband, though. This bill also is about our values, and deciding that our workforce and building a middle class here in Anarundel County is important, and paying a fair wage for fair labor is important. And it's on the table. It can't always be about the budget. It's important. It certainly is. How we spend our tax dollars are extremely important. But making sure that our capital projects are built on time and on budget, and that the folks building them are going home with a sustainable family wage is important. And we're all going to be voting on those values tonight. So keep that in mind. I look forward to the public hearing. This is a big bill, and it's an important bill. And like I said before, Anarundel County is the outlier. The census shows that we're, what, the fourth-largest county now in Maryland? And we got a lot of catching up to do in areas like this.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Trumbauer, I just wanted to go back to the conversation we were having about the budget and how it's put together, and understanding that material costs are rising, and that's been, we just saw this with a project in the county, right, that it's causing some increases. So keeping in mind, this bill would increase costs, material costs are increasing, and you're seeing, as, you know, you're honing in on the CIP, you get to next year, and the costs are much higher because of this bill and materials. I see only a couple of options. Either you cut out projects from the CIP or delay them dramatically, or you increase taxes to offset the costs. Is that, I just want to make sure, when you say that you're honing down the CIP, that that's essentially, those are the options you're looking at?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. The options we look at are the number of projects coming in, the timing of those projects, how to put that jigsaw puzzle together in a way that comes under the debt affordability limit. So that's how we do it, and we're getting constant updates from Department of Public Works on their updated cost estimates, when we're putting the budget together and after it's submitted to the council. We go back and forth with the auditor's office, because oftentimes, information comes in after May 1, when we finalize the budget, and so that's when we adjust things during the supplemental. But there hasn't been conversation about increasing revenue to cover it. It's been, here's what the guidelines are, this is what we have to work with, and let's put the best capital program together that we can.
Okay. Do you agree, though, that could mean delaying projects or cutting them out altogether? If it's not increases?
I mean, that's part of the calculation every year. We, I mean, you've been around, and all the council members have to know, that we have a lot of projects that our good directors submit to us every year. We can't do them all. We do as many of them as we can. We go through a prioritization exercise that does last three or four months in order to hone it down to what is submitted to the council. So that's part of the process every year. I wish we could do everything, because there's a lot of infrastructure needs and project needs in the county, but we can't do that, and we put the best capital program together that we can.
Thank you. Ms. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Trumbauer or Mr. Phipps, but if the impact of this is actually not the 2% to 15% that you cite in your fiscal note, which is a regurgitation of the 2014 DLS study, because there's really no independent analysis here, it's sort of a regurgitation of DLS, if that number is not 2% to 15%, but is actually the 25% to 30%, how much of your capital program would you have to cut? From a budget standpoint, it's like, what, $320 million capital program? What's the number on that, if we had to take 30% off?
Well, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So the auditor actually lists that in her, in her blue note when she talks, I think she applied the calculation to the, to the current contracts in the FY '22 budget. So that's where the $37 million number came that your colleague asked us about. I think that's right, Madam Auditor.
Which percentage did you apply to that?
Michelle Belair, County Auditor. The, we applied the 2%, which is the $5 million, and then the 15%, which is the $37 million. Just to provide a little additional information, the fiscal note from DLS for the 2014 session actually gave a 2% to 5% range in the likelihood to increase by approximately that amount. There was an additional task force to study the applicability of the Maryland prevailing wage, also conducted in 2014, that cited an approximate 10% increase. So in calculation of the upper limit of 15%, it included the CPI for an additional time period. That's where the 15% is coming from.
May I follow up, Madam Chair?
Just one.
Thank you. So if we were to double the 15% to 30%, then you'd become a $74 million hole in the capital program, right?
If it was 30%, then that would be double of 37.
Right, okay.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilman Andrew Pruski. Again, I don't want the crowd to say, how many people here work in construction and trades? Because this is what we're talking about, okay? How many people, if you got paid a little more money, would probably spend that locally, because we're acting for a local provision, about going to eat and whatever else, okay? So obviously, the hands stayed up. I think we're missing the forest through the trees here, in the sense that, I think, I think that people don't understand, we're talking about cost of project revenue, but then on the other hand of, if somebody's getting paid a higher wage, where they spend it if we have a local provision? I think that we really need to continue to talk about that. Again, yes, costs are going up and the other pieces, but I don't hear the fact of people making a little bit more money and also spending that money getting gas, it's a local, you know, project and hire. I don't know if the administration wants to add on to that, and I don't have analysis in front of me, but again, I keep hearing the other end of revenue in this side, but I'm not talking about how a person will spend the money locally. So I just think we're looking, it's a two-sided coin. You know, we're talking about one end, well, this is the projects we can't do, but yet if revenue goes up on the other end of people spending money, I'm not, I don't understand that.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Oh, sorry, my lights just on.
No problem. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I want to go back to a question that continues to be asked, because I don't think it has been answered yet. With the unknown cost, Mr. Trumbauer, you said, and quote, "We don't know how much this will cost." Could we, at some point in the future, have to make a decision that we have to cut capital improvement projects or increase taxes to pay for them? Because I don't believe, it can't always be about the budget. I certainly understand wages and getting them back into the economy, but when we're talking about an unknown millions of dollars, and that question, those two questions haven't specifically been answered, I think it's important that we get that on the record. So thank you.
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I'm going to say this again, because I don't think I'm being clear. We cut projects every year. We get submissions, we have to cut projects because we have to get them to fit into our capital program under the debt affordability guidelines and the debt affordability limits. This bill will likely cause some projects to be more expensive. That's outlined in the fiscal note, it's outlined in the county auditor's blue letter. It's impossible for me to tell you exactly how much that will be. I can tell you that costs go up every year. I can tell you that this bill might make costs go up a little bit more than they would already, but we, every year, we have to take projects out that the administration would like to do to make our affordability. So this will, this will be one more factor in that. I mean, I can't tell you what project is not going to get built in '23, because we haven't even set out the parameters of everything that's been submitted by the departments. But again, that is a process that happens every year. I can't be any more specific than that, I'm sorry, council member.
Okay, I propose, I'm going to call in Mr. Volkey and then Ms. Rodvian, and then I'd like to get to the public hearing while we have all these folks waiting for us to do that. So go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey. Can anyone tell me what the percentage of employees working on county projects that are over $5 million are in county residence versus out-of-county residence at the current time?
Pete Barron with the administration. I don't believe we can, but I'm looking to the gentleman on either side of me for agreement. We can't give you that number.
Okay, and the only reason I'm asking is because my colleague, Councilman Pruski, brought up the idea that this is going to encourage more hiring of in-county folks. I just want to know where you're relying on the data to support that statement? Where is that coming from?
Pete Barron with the administration. We currently do not have a local hire law.
I understand that, I'm just saying, you're making the statement that this is going to increase the number of people who are in county residence working on these projects. I just want to know, do you know where you are now, and how are you going to measure how much this bill does?
New positions created would have to be 50% local hire, using best efforts under the bill.
I think the answer is you don't have the information right now, right?
I think I said that, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District 6. I'm not sure who at the table might be able to answer this, but I've always believed in the concept of you get what you pay for. And if we are moving to a prevailing wage, we are more likely to be having more highly skilled workers on projects. Do you think that's fair to say? I don't know who can answer that.
Pete Barron with the administration. I think everybody at the table would agree, yes.
I saw nodding heads, so I just, you know, for the record, need it to be out loud. And if you have more skilled workers and more skilled people working on the projects to begin with, you're less likely to have to redo work later or make repairs early on. You might save in maintenance costs down the road. Do you think that's a fair assessment?
Yes, Mr. Phipps, you want to? Yes, I think that's a fair, logical extension.
So if we're looking at the cost, and we're only looking at the cost upfront, we're really not looking at the whole cost of a project. And I think we also mentioned the idea that we're moving to, and I've talked to, I don't actually have the numbers that my colleague from District 3 was looking for either, but I do know that there have been many county projects where subcontractors or subcontractors have brought in workers from several states away in order to be able to pay them significantly lower than, you know, what the prevailing wage would allow. And so this would bring job opportunities back to our county, yes? Is that fair to say? Those jobs would much more likely be hired, you know, if we're currently hiring, you know, for a certain aspect of a job, a contractor who has labor from, say, Tennessee or Kentucky. I was born in Tennessee, so nothing against Tennessee or Kentucky. But if we have folks coming in who, you know, don't live in the county, don't spend their money here, are going to take that money home, take a smaller amount of money home, which, you know, considering the cost of living, may be more meaningful to them than, you know, we're also, we're going to get that gain of having that money spent in the county, we're going to have local workers doing local jobs, and this is, I mean, I think ultimately good for the economy. Even if we end up spending a little bit more upfront, the whole lifetime of a project is going to be more valuable. Is that, or more cost-effective? Do you think that's a reasonable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7221. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive seven submissions of online testimony. We also received approximately 28 letters that came through our Dropbox out front or email. That was all shared with the council, it's all been added to the record.
Thank you. Now, time for the in-person testimony. At this time, will Mr. Carl Niemeyer, William Yul, Jermaine Jones, and Thomas Colleen, please come forward? I know you all have heard me say this multiple times tonight, but make sure your red light is on if you're speaking. Please begin by stating your name and address for the record, and if you're representing an organization, please also identify the organization. Mr. Niemeyer?
Thank you, Chair Lacy. County council members, thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight in strong support of 7221. My name's Carl Niemeyer, 12 Row Lane, Arnold, Maryland. I'm the president and founder of Burner Mechanical and Construction Solutions, a service to disabled veteran-owned small business here in Anarundel County. My wife and I fell in love with the area during my last military assignment at the Naval Academy, and we chose to make Anarundel County our permanent home to raise our five children. We are very invested in our chosen home, which is why I was so pleased to be able to start a business here several years ago. For my company's founding, we have been committed to the quality of our product and the well-being of our workforce, hiring skilled and union employees who earn the prevailing wage with portable healthcare and retirement benefits. We do this because it is the right thing to do by our workers and our customers. We do this in spite of the market pressures that encourage employers to cut corners by paying workers poorly, just to be that lowest bidder without sacrificing their profits up top. And to be frank, the decision to be an ethical employer in this field has prevented us from being able to be competitive for capital projects funded by Anarundel County. Our market research revealed that it was simply not worth our time and resources to bid on projects like the Arundel Swim Center stays for renovation, because we cannot compete with low-road contractors who can undercut us by not paying their labor the family-supporting wage they deserve. Right now, one-fifth of our workforce lives in the county. Some are lifelong residents. I have a strong desire to recruit, train, and employ more county residents. However, that presents a challenge when other counties are providing well-paying opportunities that ours is not. We can really only be the best place for all if the county government is leading by example and supporting opportunities for all its citizens right here. But it isn't just the workers who benefit from the prevailing wage. As Ms. Rodvian said, you get what you pay for, and regardless of differing political ideas, we all expect good stewardship of our tax dollars. And I have seen the delays, the change orders, and the inferior product that often comes with a cheap price. I strongly believe that employing high-road contractors who are committed to paying fair prevailing wages is a benefit to the county. When you ensure that the bidders know how to run a successful business without relying on shortchanging the worker, this will yield more qualified bidders and higher-quality work that lives up to expectations, thus avoiding costly repairs and dissatisfied constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Niemeyer, and thank you for your service also, sir. Mr. Yul?
Yes, my name is William Yul. I'm the director for the National Electrical Contractors Association of Maryland, 1436 Andre Street in Baltimore, but my office is located 1743 Dorsey here in Anarundel County. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. Nika is the voice of the $171 billion electrical construction industry. Nationally, Nika represents over 70,000 electrical contractors across the United States, and in this state of Maryland, I had the pleasure of representing over 75 contractors who employ 2,000 Maryland residents. In fact, we have several of our members' companies that are located right here in your jurisdiction. We strongly support Bill 7221. We view the adoption of prevailing wage requirements as a win-win for both workers, taxpayers, and local high-road contractors. From a contractor's perspective, prevailing wage helps retain a trained and skilled workforce by promoting apprenticeship programs and providing higher wages for skilled craftsmen, which in turn reduces workforce turnover, reduce injury rates, boosts worker productivity while minimizing job site disruptions. All these factors combined effectively help offset the impact of prevailing wage on construction costs. Another benefit of prevailing wage is that it will help Anarundel County contractors compete and win county public work contracts. This is because prevailing wage laws enable local contractors to submit competitive bids based on the wages they need to pay to attract local construction workers. Finally, the utilization of prevailing wage promotes a higher quality of craftsmanship on publicly-funded projects that protects both taxpayers in the community and the workers on set job sites. In the construction industry, most projects are awarded to the lowest bidder, which incentivizes low-road contractors to do anything to get the lowest bid, whether they be by cutting corners or worse, stealing wages from hard-working employees, which we unfortunately see much too often through worker misclassification. By promoting prevailing wage, we are guaranteeing that all contractors and all, are on the same-level playing field, pay fair and and are on the same level playing field pay fair and honest wages to all their employees, ensure a stable, well-qualified workforce is on county public work projects. Thank you for your opportunity to speak, or for the opportunity to speak in support of this bill. On behalf of Nika and the community of Anarondle County, please vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Yul. Jermaine Jones?
Yes, Jermaine Jones, 3600 O'Donnell Street, with the Baltimore DC Building Trades. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 7221. As I said earlier, I'm the Baltimore area director for the Baltimore DC Building Trades. The Baltimore DC Building Trades represents 24 local affiliates with over 25,000 skilled craft professionals in the building and construction industry. We advocate for advancements in the construction industry in addition to ensuring every worker receives an honest day's pay for a hard day's work, return home safely to their families, and receive health care and retirement that they can rely on one day. Our affiliated apprenticeship program spends more than $22 million annually on apprenticeship and journeyman upgrade training. The Baltimore Building Trades strongly support Bill 7212. This bill is not only beneficial to the county, but to the worker as well. Research shows where there's prevailing wage laws, there's also a boost in worker productivity, a reduction in injury rates, and an increase in apprenticeship training, and it also provides a local, a boost to local tax revenue without raising construction costs. In addition, for the workers, from the worker's perspective, prevailing wage raises the standard for middle-class workers. A county resident deserves not just jobs, but jobs with family-supporting wages. If someone lives in the county, they should also be able to work in the county and receive a wage which supports the county's cost of living. Lastly, prevailing wage helps to minimize the race and gender income gap. Unfortunately, across this country, so many workers still experience wage disparities solely due to their race and gender. And research shows that the income gap between African-American and white labors is 12% less in states with prevailing wage. In closing, last month, we celebrated Labor Day. Many of us took time to pay tribute to American workers. I encourage you not only to support those workers in September, but throughout the entire year by passing this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Colleen?
Yes, good evening, Chair Lacy and members of the Anarondle County Council. My name is Thomas Colleen. I reside at 8 Evergreen Trail in Severnham Park, Maryland. I've lived in Anarondle County for 32 years. I've coached sports. My children have gone to school in Anarondle County, and I also am a member of Anarondle County Workforce Development Board. This bill will provide county residents, I'm here tonight to ask you to pass the bill, 7221, as is, with no amendments. This bill will provide county residents who work in the building trade a wage in line with Anarondle County's cost of living and an opportunity to close, to work close to home, paying the prevailing wage benefits all county residents by allowing workers to shop and live in the county, helping local businesses increase the county's tax base. In closing, I ask once again that you pass this bill as is for Anarondle County residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. Next up, I have Ms. Roxana Mihia, Ray Cleland, Brian Cavey, and Raymond Douglas Cleland, unless, okay, then Kurt Snyder, if you're here, please also come to the table at this time. And Brian Cavey. And Ms. Olvera, I should stop calling her name, except she signed up, so if I don't call her, she might get mad later. Okay, Concepcion Morales. And we'll go ahead and start with you, Ms. Mihia.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Lacy and members of the Anarondle County Council. My name is Roxana Mihia. I'm a member of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, proudly headquartered right here in Anarondle County. Thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight in support of Bill 7221. This bill is very important to me and other women in the construction industry. Having prevailing wage in the county will help eliminate the gender wage gap that exists for women in the construction industry. This is because prevailing wage does not look at a person's gender to determine wages. Rather, prevailing wages are calculated through impartial surveys and reflect what workers in the area are actually making. This prevents employers from offering women and people of color like me lower wages. Furthermore, this bill encourages local hire and will provide opportunities for many county residents from all walks of life to have careers in the construction industry and to have a decent wage to have a better quality of life in the county. So, please, voting support and in favor of Bill 7221. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mihia. Mr. Cleland, your turn again.
Yes, Raymond Cleland, 1146 St. Carathan Drive, Indianapolis, Maryland. I am the president of Island Workers Local 5. Earlier, you asked, why is there a wage difference? It's because there's no enforcement. There is a misclassification on a lot of jobs that end up going backwards and not being able to catch who's doing something wrong. And also, there is a lot of, in this country right now, a lot of illegal immigrants that are working for these contractors. The ABC around the corner, obviously, is, you know, a perpetuate of it. What those people, you understand, this protects also those workers. Why are they happy when there's a prevailing wage? Because at that point in time, they're going to get $50 in their pocket instead of 18 and 23. They love it. That's why these contractors, when they bid on it, they under, there's misclassifications, and they come in there and they get these jobs from us. And then what happens? They abuse the workers that they got. The worker loves it because he goes up to $50 an hour for a six-month job, then he's back down to 18, 20 bucks an hour. The difference is, that difference in scale pays for our kids' health care, pays for us for pension, for retirement later. These are the things that we get, that they don't get. So, is there a difference in scale? Yes, there is. The reason there is, the contractors get more of the money. I'm not saying people don't get health care, but what happens is, they give you the health care, but not your family. So, now you've got to pay for the health care out of your family's pocket, out of your wages, to make sure they're covered with health care. So, there's many reasons how they exploit the system. But, you know, I just would like to thank Ms. Lacy, Rivera, Pruski, and Pickard for your thoughts in this matter. And I'm definitely in support of this going through. But you asked where the difference in cost is, that's the cost.
Thank you, Mr. Cleland. Mr. Snyder?
Good evening, Chair Lacy and council members. My name is Kurt Snyder. I live at 2110 Megan Court in Crofton, Maryland. And I represent the Sheet Metal Contractors Association of the Mid-Atlantic, and I, my position is support of Bill 7221. My primary duty is marketing and communication, even though I'm a former naval officer and I have many multimillion-dollar project improvements on warships. And what we've seen is, like so many others have testified to, when you, when you bank on the fair wage, what our contractors expect, and prevailing wage, it's just not about the numbers. You're saying to the younger generation, there's a career for you. And that's the big thing. We, I think we get lost in the numbers, and sometimes we need to look at the big picture of what's going on. So, SMACNA is a worldwide organization headquartered in Chantilly, 3,500 union HVAC and sheet metal contractors. Forty-five members are headquartered here in Maryland, including many in Anarondle County. So, who do our contractors work with? National Security Agency, a three-letter entity I can't mention, presidential helicopter hangars, overseas embassies, ventilation system at the White House, I'll stop there. Quality. The federal government recognizes SMACNA contractors to a certain standard, just like other people here tonight. But from the contractor's perspective, prevailing wage is very helpful. That's because prevailing wage requirements level the playing field for reputable high-road contractors, like so many have stated before me. And they mitigate or minimize the bottom feeders, the ones who lurk in the shadows. They smile when they get the contract, they go back into darkness, and they really don't pay their workers the benefits that they should. So, SMAC also supports the local hiring portion of Bill 7221. It's absolutely good public policy to have local tax dollars, create jobs here in Anarondle County, and the prevailing wage is essential for that. So, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on this, and SMACNA supports Bill 7221.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Mr. Morales?
Good evening, Chair Lacy and council members. My name is Concepcion Morales. I live on 101 Baltimore Avenue, Glen Burnin. I'm here to support the Bill 7221. I am a construction worker. I'm a carpenter by trade, member of the local 197. And as a county resident, I will ask that the taxpayers' money be expensed wisely and a responsible manner by hiring responsible contractors who will pay fair wages to the workers. For so long, the work-class people has been oppressed in this county, and it's time to pass the prevailing wage and local hiring bill. I believe this bill will help to prevent some contractors abuse the vulnerable workforce. Vulnerable workforce is all those people who here undocumented, who, those people who doesn't speak the language, and those people the contractors know, and they abuse on purpose because they know those people vulnerable. So, this somehow, somehow this bill will help to regulate the process by hiring workers and also will regulate on the process when the county is selecting the contractors will level somehow the, the field play. Also, this will prevent big time. This will go against the tax fraud going on on construction workers. So, fair payday for a fair day's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. This panel is dismissed. And now, if there is anyone in the audience who didn't sign up beforehand but wished us to speak now on Bill Number 7221, please come down to the table. Go ahead, Mr. Dole.
Thank you. David Dole, 534 Heavy Tree Hills, Severnham Park, Maryland, chairman of the Anarondle County Libertarians. So, I was, I heard big picture, and I just wanted to, maybe nobody has the answer for this, but what percentage of the GDP is being invested in these capital projects? I mean, we're talking about like, oh, we're going to do all those great things for these workers, but like, that's a, seems like a very tiny percentage of the workers in Anarondle County. A gentleman said that workers are making $18 to $23 an hour. I make less than that. I'm wearing a suit that I got at a thrift store. You're going to subsidize them getting more money at my expense as the taxpayer. We talked about morals. That's immoral. That's not American.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, VO Box 6634, Indianapolis, Maryland. I was not going to speak, but I just have to. A lot of you know I'm a retired teacher, and so I need a little bit of teaching time here, because we, this discussion certainly focused on the bill, which is appropriate, but we need to look at how did the income, how did the, you know, what happened to the labor, you know, the whole budget? You know, Bernie Sanders was a real popular figure, because he was saying people need a livable wage. And so, how did it happen that we lost the livable wage? Well, I'm so old to drink, you know, my, my parents are from the generation that survived the Great Depression, and their yearbooks talked about what is the world going to be like when, when we get through this terrible ordeal. And so, what happened was you had, you know, World War, you know, people, people fought in World War II, they came back, and so, the economy began booming. But a big part of that was good wages for the workers, for the labor movement. If you want to read some really moving books, I would really recommend John Steinbeck's The Grapes of Wrath. To understand that people would work for, you know, the initial price was five cents a bushel for picking fruit. Somebody else says, hey, I'll take, I'll work for four cents a bushel. Hey, my family's starving. I'll work for three. And so, the wages were driven down. And this was the beginning or a part of the labor movement. And then, as you got farther along through the 50s, people's wages were doing really well. And then, as you got up to, you know, frankly, to Ronald Reagan, he started the, you know, he fired all of the air traffic controllers, which was the death knell for an awful lot of the labor movement, and people started, you know, really frowning upon the labor movement. We'll mention the fact that there were some corrupt, you know, labor people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, the public hearing on Bill Number 7221 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7221.
Bill Number 7221: Inordinance Concerning Purchasing Capital Improvement Contracts, Prevailing Wage, and Local Hiring.
All right, we do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects a typographical error.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Rodvian, second.
Is there a second?
Allison Pickard, second.
Thank you. Does anyone want to discuss the typo from revision to revisions? Madam Secretary, please call to roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, because we were fixing a typo that was not in a monetary amount, we can vote on this bill tonight, even though we just amended it. Is there any further discussion at this time? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey. One of the comments that was raised during the public testimony was a discussion about people who are in this country without lawful status working, and the idea that they're being used to undercut the system. I am curious, does this legislation provide any protections to ensure that the county will only contract with contractors who are hiring and screening for people who are here in the country with lawful status?
Pete Barron with the administration. This bill does not speak to anything around immigration status.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District 3. Are there any provisions in county law currently that would require that the county only do business or contract with entities who are ensuring that they're hiring people who have lawful status?
There are a number, Pete Barron, the administration, there are a number of federal rules around employment, and I believe the county would have to abide by all of them. I will defer to anybody at the table who might know of any specific county provisions, but I am not aware of any.
Ms. Pickard?
Allison Pickard, thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I thought you were asking me to answer the question. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the folks that came and spoke on behalf, in support of this bill. Roxana, you're, you're, the emotion, I could hear the emotion in your voice, and I appreciate you stepping out and stepping up in support of gender equity and pay in the construction trades. I also want to, to emphasize the need that we have in this country for growing our skilled trades, and I'm excited to see Anarondle County taking this step forward to encourage our youth and our young people to take a different path than what we've been encouraging them to do for the last few decades that put us in this position. There is excellent potential for family-sustaining wages in the construction trades, and I know we have young people interested in working with their hands rather than maybe seeking a very expensive college education. So, this is just bringing us forward in line, again, like we've talked about with our, with our neighboring counties. And I do want to just thank everybody who came out to speak and have been supporters of fair pay for a fair day's work. Thank you. and have been supporters of fair pay for a fair day's work. Thank you.
Ms. Schuet, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to say that although the purchasing agent can dispute, I'm almost 100% certain that there's a provision in all county contracts that say you have to comply with all federal, state, and local law. So that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So for those that came out and testified this evening, I certainly appreciate the work that the tradesmen, tradeswomen do. But we're not just talking about appreciation here, and that is where I have expressed my concerns and tried to get definite answers from the administration because at the end of the day, this is going to fall to the taxpayer if we do not want to make potential, because I'm not sure what the answer was to the capital improvement project. So, you know, there are other ways to increase and encourage interest in trades for our youth. And I just cannot, cannot support a bill where we don't know how much it will cost. We don't know the breakout of Anarondale County residents working in the industry. We didn't reach out to the contractor specifically to find out what it would do to their business and their increase in cost. And we are relying on a 14-year-old study that doesn't take anything into account with the current economy. So that's where I am this evening, and I will be casting my vote momentarily.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To speak directly to the current state of the economy, I think most of us are aware that there are labor shortages in many fields. And we need to be mindful of what we can do to make sure that we actually have qualified people and skilled people to fill the contracts that our county, that our county will have with various projects going forward. I also think one of the things that we leave out of this conversation quite frequently is externalized costs. So we talk about, you know, what is the upfront cost of the project? Well, the upfront cost of the project may be lower if you're paying a lower wage, if you're not paying a prevailing wage. But you can end up, you end up, it ends up not really coming out, you end up not coming out ahead when you have, for example, employees who are paid less money and end up needing to have different forms of government assistance. They need to rely on emergency medical care because they don't have health insurance and have to, ultimately, it comes down, comes back to the taxpayer. So we think about, you know, we think about the different things that might be in the upfront cost, but we ignore those externalized costs. We ignore the fact that a project that is completed by highly skilled workers can be completed more promptly in most situations than lower-paid workers who are likely less skilled and less experienced. So what have we lost in the use of the different projects that we, that we are creating for our county when we don't have those facilities available for, you know, for a longer period of time? I'm imagining a school that maybe, you know, is six months less in time to build because we have skilled workers doing it. That means students are in a quality facility more promptly because we have skilled workers and schools are actually already covered by state contract and covered by state prevailing wage law. But as an example of something, you know, we gain the use of whatever facilities or projects that we are putting in and the lost time of having those facilities. So I think we're just, you know, we're always, we're focusing too much on one bottom line as opposed to all of the different costs that come down the road. And to continue to ignore those costs and pretend that they're not part of the equation, to pretend that it's irrelevant, that, you know, we would hire workers for out, or we, but contractors would hire workers for out-of-state who would then take their money and spend it out-of-state instead of spending it here in the local economy, or that their taxes are not paid into our local economy. All of those things add up. And so on top of the fact that it's really just the right thing to do, if you are, if you are, as us as the county or any employer, if you are taking a person and basically taking everything that they can give in terms of their, their personal effort, their human resource, we call human resources, but their human resource, and, you know, taking their 40 hours a week, or maybe, you know, maybe in some cases more, after that they may not have much to give, they should be able to support themselves. If you take that from a worker, if you take that amount of work, they should be able to support themselves. And we shouldn't put that burden on someone else. That is our burden to carry, and that is ours collectively, not just, you know, not just a small group of people. So I'm absolutely gonna support this. It's 100% the right thing to do to make sure that workers, that workers get what they deserve, that they can make an affordable, that they can make a decent living. We know that research shows that if we have well-paid workers, that buoys others in that same economy, in that same economic space. And we should, this is a place where we can make, that passing this law will benefit workers in all fields. So this is absolutely the right thing to do.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. A quick comment and then a couple of follow-up questions. I think it's, I think it's factually incorrect to suggest that the prevailing wage bill would somehow solve any, any and all delays or make sure that all projects are completed on time and things like that. We have entire boards of contract appeals in the country. The Armed Services Board of Contract Appeals, the Civilian Board of Contract Appeals, Maryland has its own, the Maryland State Board of Contract Appeals, the Court of Federal Claims. Their entire job is to hear contract disputes, many times over delays, on state and federal jobs. So, and then those projects are subject to Davis Bacon or state prevailing wage laws. So, I mean, certainly to say that there'll be no more delays because of prevailing wage, I just don't think that that's a factually correct statement to make. Separately, we've heard a lot of testimony about kind of this race to the bottom. And I wanted to ask, I think this question is probably for Mr. Heim, procurement. A lowest bid is not the only way to procure a project, right?
Andrew Heim, county purchasing agent, that is correct. Yeah, there are multiple ways to award contracts.
So there's an ability for a procurement to use something like a best value contract or some other form like that, which wouldn't necessarily have this race to the bottom, right?
Andrew Heim, Anarondale County purchasing agent, yes, there are multiple ways to be able to secure different types of contracts. But in the process and programs that we have established for capital construction, as well as AE and other types of solicitations, the low bid is the preferred method of how we, in the normal process for doing that.
Okay, but it's not the only way. Okay. I have one other unrelated question, Madam Chair, thank you. Jessica Hare, District Seven still. We talked about this a little bit at the work session in the local hiring provision. Couple of pieces here. Mr. Barron, we talked about how it discusses the, there's a definition of the department, but it doesn't say which department would oversee any of this. And then there's this requirement to use best efforts to secure local hires. And there are quite a number of penalties for failing to use best efforts to get local hires. But there's, there's no definition of best hires, and we don't even know in this bill who's going to be overseeing the program. And we asked about this at the work session. Has there been any kind of, just update on that? Do we have an idea of which department's gonna be overseeing it? Do we have a definition of best efforts? Is it, you know, one career fair? Is it three? What's, what are we, what's the standard we're holding people to?
Thank you, Pete Barron with the administration. I think the comments I made at the work session stand. We have not, there is no new addition. I will say, I think there was a discussion around where the purchasing agent sits, and that remains, that the purchasing agent will help provide a lot of that guidance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Schuet, thank you for clarifying that about the provision to comply with federal law, which got to my point, which is this whole idea of the immigrants are taking our jobs and thereby undercutting us and thereby causing shoddy workmanship is really a false argument because that's not in fact what's happening because the county already is required to work with contractors who are hiring people who are here with lawful status.
Pete Barron with the administration, we never, the administration never made that argument.
I'm not saying you did. That was a comment that I heard in public testimony, which is why I wanted to understand the basis of it. With that said, I'm gonna come back to Mr. Phipps because he's been here for a while, for at least three to five administrations, by my count, somewhere in that range. You were asked a series of questions by Councilwoman Rodvian, where she sort of led you down this path of you're gonna pay more upfront, that's going to lead to better value down the road, and it's gonna be less redos and less shoddy work, and on and on we went. And everyone agreed and said, yes, these assumptions are all correct. I'd just like to know in the last 20 years, if you can give me a project that you've worked on or that the Department of Public Works has brought to Anarondale County where they allowed a contractor to do shoddy work that has now turned around and cost county taxpayers more money on the back end?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Again, I think this is, this is not an argument or comparison I can draw because I don't know, I can't compare it against a project that would have had the prevailing wage and how that would have stacked up against any other project for very, very many different reasons, may have been successful or failed. That beyond workmanship and design, weather, there's just so many, there's so many variables, you can't isolate all them and do this kind of one-to-one comparison that everyone seems to want to have, but we, it's just that, even the state's 2014 study, they had hundreds of data sets, data points, not just one. You know, for the contractor that claims it was 25% more if he bid prevailing wage. But what they did show is that they broke up, they broke those contracts into disciplines, and they evaluated each of the disciplines, whether it's masonry work, roofing work, mechanical, electrical, painting. And painting was the highest. It was around 25 to 28% because it's mostly labor. Mechanical, electrical came in around 12 to 15. Roofing, 4%. So you start to, it depends on the nature of the project that will, and how that project is built in terms of percentage of labor, percentage of material, percentage of electrical, mechanical equipment. So again, there's just so many variables. Even the state said, that's why we have such a broad range of 2 to 15% because there's not one size fits all.
Another question?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Nathan Volkey. So, Mr. Phipps, I hear you on that. This was a utility contractor that reached out to us, not a painting contractor or an HVAC contractor or anything like that. It was a utility contractor who gave us that number. But I guess the struggle that I have is, if you're not able to point to any project where there's been a higher down-the-road cost because the county used bad contractors or subcontractors on the front end, then how is it that you can go to the other side of that and draw the inference that somehow if we pass this, the county taxpayers are going to get a better bang for their buck? Or they're going to see better quality work, or it's gonna be more efficient, or it's gonna be more cost-effective? I don't understand how you can have one side of that coin and say, well, I can't answer, I can't point to anything. But on the flip side, you can say, but absolutely, things will get better. So if you've got anything that you can provide on that, I would appreciate it.
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I cite the evidence that's supported in the 2014 DLS study. And they quote different, there was Duncan, 2011 study, found that the increased productivity and efficiency of workers on prevailing wage projects offset the cost, the higher cost of wages. Phillips, 2011 study, or 2001 study, provides an explanation for how increased productivity offsets higher wage rates. Prevailing wage regulations include contractors to hire a more skilled labor force, equip them with better and more up-to-date tools, materials, and equipment. I mean, I can't provide what you're looking for, which is like a test tube example of success or failure. All I can do is go back to the literature that suggests higher skilled, higher-paid workers are gonna give us a higher skilled workforce, better equipped to provide better projects.
Mr. Phipps, Sarah Lacy, District One. Prevailing wage isn't, it's not a new concept, is it?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I probably should defer to my contracting agent, the purchasing agent, but that's something probably closer in his belly way.
Okay, because I'm not a labor scholar, per se, but even I could Google and find that prevailing wage was, you know, part of the earliest labor movements in the early 1900s where a few states started adopting prevailing wage laws. And then we get the federal prevailing wage law, I think in 1931. So, I mean, this is, this, not only is this not a new concept, it's, it's one where there's a whole lot more data than the 2014 DLS study available to look at, right?
Yes, Andrew Heim, purchasing agent for Anarondale County. To the first question, which is, is this a new concept? And no, it's not. It's been around for a long period of time. I can, I can go off of my own experience with it, which might be helpful to the council members here. I started my career in construction, undergraduate degree in construction management, working in the Chicagoland area, where every contract for home building was a union contract. I gained great experience with being able to learn how to manage construction projects for Polty Homes, Del Webb, and be able to build construction projects at one of the fastest schedules in the Midwest. And one of the benefits of being able to, when the economic downturn hit, it was really beneficial of prevailing wage, was having the capability of contractors to be able to come in and support and build homes faster and more effective and more efficient than what could be done in a structure where you have smaller contractors with more individualized operations. So you can take a home building project where you're building 5,000 homes on a 120-day schedule and turn that into an 80 or 90-day schedule because of the bench strength and support of contractors' capabilities and operations. Coming out here to the Mid-Atlantic, when I moved out here, you know, the capacity for prevailing wage and for contractors in that, in that kind of operation is much smaller. There's certainly not the capability of that operation. And I think from just the benefits, everything that was already talked to about not only the economic benefit of it, but also the benefit from, you know, increasing the, you know, leveling the playing field, increasing the number of capable companies being able to respond to it. Although it does create, you know, possibility of additional cost, additional administrative operations, it does create an opportunity for increased number of contractors.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. That was very helpful. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So this is just a comment to kind of, I think, summarize what Councilman Volkey was asking again and again. And I'm still trying to understand how we, how, how we can say or how the folks before us can say it will result in a better product with more experience when we can't cite a previous CIP, Capital Improvement Project, that would have been better had we had prevailing wages. So I'm just gonna file this, this question and this continued question in a "we don't know the answer" category for this legislation. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodman, District Six. I know we may not be able to provide examples in this county, but I think you've cited many studies that have looked at this issue and have indeed found that we have efficiencies and higher quality of work. I also wanted to just clarify something that my colleague Ms. Hare mentioned that I said. And if I didn't say this, I want to make sure that this is my line of thinking, that I didn't mean to indicate that with prevailing wage, you would never have delays. It was that you would likely have fewer delays. And I think that Mr. Heims actually just kind of gave an example where you would, you could complete projects on a shorter work schedule where you had highly skilled workers and workers, in fact, even workers that are accustomed to working together. You kind of get in a rhythm with the colleagues that you have. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just want to go back to something that Councilwoman Lacy mentioned just a minute ago about kind of how federal labor law had been around since the 1930s, I think. I do want to note for anybody who, who is reading this now for the first time or whatnot, there are a number of provisions in this bill that go far beyond what the federal Davis Bacon wages do, particularly, and we discussed this at length at the work session, but particularly kind of this joint and several liability, as well as this private cause of action that's created here. So, and that, to my understanding, tracks very recent state laws, recently as 2019. So there are some actually very new provisions in here that, that go quite a bit beyond what the federal law has ever done.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey. Mr. Phipps, I'm gonna follow up with you because you have the longevity. Under the Owens administration, did they introduce any prevailing wage legislation to the county council?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I can't, I don't know.
Okay. You were here during some of the Owens administration...
I was here, but I wasn't a director under Ms. Owens.
Do you recall any of this being introduced during the Leopold administration, the Newman administration, or the Schu administration?
Pete Barron with the county executive. To our knowledge, this is the first prevailing wage bill in Anarundel County.
Okay, and this has been around since the earliest days of the labor movement in the early 20th century, maybe even late 19th century?
Prevailing wage, that is?
Yeah, right, great, that is what Madam Chair said. Yeah, okay. So in all that time, all these different administrations, nobody's ever brought this forward before, is that my understanding?
This administration, Councilman yourself, you have brought forward bills that no person has brought before. Progress, you know, we're all making our mark here, sir.
All right, got it, got it.
Ms. Rodvian?
I actually, just a quick Google search indicates that prevailing wage actually goes back to the Civil War, so it's even a little older than the 1930s.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I am ready to call the question, I do want to let everyone on this council know and in the audience know that we already have prevailing wage on one of the largest segments of our CIP, which is school construction, and it's been that way for a long time. While there are probably workarounds to prevailing wage where the state is paying, if the state is investing at least 25% of our capital expense for our new schools, then prevailing wage is the rule of the day. Anarundel County qualifies for state investment of 50% of our schools, so you can guess that most of our schools are being built with labor that are being paid a prevailing wage, and now we're extending that to other capital county projects with our tax dollars. This isn't a new thing, this isn't radical, let's get this done tonight, I'm ready to call the question.
Mr. Volkey, do you have a final point?
I was just going to note, now I understand why the school construction costs so much.
Ms. Pruski?
I do believe I need to respond, you know, because there was a question, why hasn't this brought up, well, maybe it's about time it is brought up, and there's people here that testified here tonight. Just saying, it took a while and it takes leadership to stand up at times, and as I said before, you know, we can argue over cost, different things, but, you know, it's a bill brought forward, everyone has that chance.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7221 as amended.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
No.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 7221 as amended is passed.
Please, please no clapping, please don't make me use my gavel, thank you, okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7321.
Bill Number, Bill Number 7321, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of Lease Agreement for Copper Mine Tennis Facility.
Mr. Barron, when your panel's ready?
Sure, thank you. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is our budget officer, sticking with me is our budget officer, Mr. Chris Trumbauer, our Wreckin Parks Director, Ms. Jessica Layes, Ms. Erica Matthews, from Central Services, Mr. Heim is sticking around, and from Law, Ms. Lori Blair, Klaus Meyer. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trumbauer now.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So we discussed this, I think, in fairly good detail at the work session, but to get on the record for tonight's meeting, I have a couple of points I want to make, and then we'll open up to questions for a panel. Some of you will remember that Millersville Park first appeared in the CIP back in FY16, it was to include athletic fields, tennis facilities, and other park amenities. This was during the private, previous administration. And then in fiscal year 17, that capital project was changed to be a tennis center with, and the county would build the outdoor courts, and there was an agreement with the tennis alliance, which would be responsible for the indoor facilities. So that has recently changed where the tennis alliance is no longer in partnership with the county, but the county did put out an RFP for a public-private partnership. There was a robust review process. What is before you today is a request to ratify the lease for the winning bidder, which is Copper Mine. So this was a competitive RFP. We do have Andrew Heim here, our purchasing officer, to keep us on track and ensure we don't violate our procurement laws in discussing the lease and things like that. Andrew is much more up on all the ins and outs of that than I am. As folks know, there has been a lot of change with this project, not only since its inception, but also over the last couple of years, so there's been some concern within the local community. The county executive Pittman and the administration have worked to address, hopefully, at least some of those concerns. The Department of Wreckin Parks has held several public meetings, they also met recently with members of the immediate community last month. I wanted to put on the record, county executive Pittman's vision for this facility is much different than the previous administration. This administration is more interested in a community-based focus rather than a tournament-focused tennis center. The master plan that was done years ago calls for 16 outdoor courts, however, and this is important, what is funded right now is eight outdoor courts, and the county executive Pittman has made a commitment to keep it at eight. County's also reviewed the site for stormwater management needs, will meet all the stormwater management requirements. County's also considering future enhancements to protect the environment on the site, and then we're also doing a updated traffic study at the request of the community. That began in September specifically so we could include the school traffic, and we expect to have initial results in November. So that's kind of the newest updates, and again, hopefully you will remember a discussion over the work session. We have Director Jessica Layes from Wreckin Parks, if you have any other big-picture questions about the facility, and with that, I think we'll turn it over to questions for the panel.
Good evening, Jessica Layes, Director of Recreation and Parks. I have with me tonight Erica Matthews, who is our Chief of Planning and Construction. As you just heard from Chris, this lease has been a long time coming. The project, as approved in the CIP, has always included a partner that would design, build, and operate the indoor facility at Millersville. Wreckson Parks is committed to working with the community, the stakeholders, and our new partner, to make sure that the Millersville Tennis Center becomes a reality. We appreciate your support, and we're here to answer any specific questions you have about tonight's bill.
I'm stepping in for Madam Chair for just a moment. So are there any questions from the council for our panelists?
Councilman.
Councilman Pruski?
Yeah, I'm going to wait to hear the community, but I want to get a couple of things on the record, if that's okay, Madam Vice Chair, Councilman Andrew Pruski. To be clear, because I know there's been a couple of numbers going back and forth, if the tennis center were abandoned, it's my understanding there's 4.9 million in POS funds, the auditor said 600,000 was encumbered, but I've been given a number of 847, so can you explain what the other 200,000 encumbered? I know some of this is grants, too, but I just want to be clear on that.
Good evening, I'm Erica Matthews with the Department of Recreation and Parks. You are correct, that is the correct number for Program Open Space. And then the question about what's encumbered versus what's been paid, it's a little, there are a lot of contracts in play right now. There are portions of the project that still need to be completed. One of those elements is the traffic study that Mr. Trumbauer spoke to. There's also some reconciliation or some continual design that needs to be completed once we get underway with the lease, so there are portions that are still outstanding.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, if I can continue, I have a couple, I'm sorry. And then also, this is just a statement for the record, because this project preceded me, I did not initiate it, but the initial plan that was brought by Director Mr. Anthony was 24 courts and eight-door, that was the initial plan, and then obviously it's been downsized since then. The next thing, and this is for Ms. Layes, what restrictions do you envision being placed on a facility especially related to the question of outdoor courts at dark, what kind of non-tennis events also would be allowed at the center? That was a concern raised.
So the facility, I'm sorry, Erica Matthews, Chief of Planning with the Department of Recreation and Parks. The hours for this facility and the operating, all of that will be discussed once we move a little further into the process.
Okay, and then the fees, this is one that's been, a lot of emails coming in. Do you think the fees the county for the facility would be above or below market rates? What in the contract specifically states about what people will be paying? Because you continue to hear rates overall, so I don't know if somebody could address that in terms of what services or things, you know, what people will be paying?
So the short answer to that is that this project is being designed to be a public amenity, so the fees that we are hoping to achieve are going to be, going to allow us, to allow people who otherwise may not be able to play tennis the opportunity. There will be opportunities for there to be day rates that will allow full access to the facility, there will be free days where it'll be open to the public in general, there will be membership fees. Our goal is not to compete with any of the other businesses, but to provide a high-quality recreational amenity at public facility prices.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make a statement after public testimony, because there's some other things that I want to do.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey. Ms. Matthews, I'm not entirely clear, because Councilman Pruski asked how much money had been spent, he said the 4.9 million, and then he said the auditor had noted somewhere between 600, and then there were other things about 800. So you said to him in response to the question, you're correct, so what's the amount of money? If you can just lay out like piece by piece, how much money?
So typically, that's a DPW question, but from my recollection, what's included in the 4.9 million, I think is the number that's in the Program Open Space. That, it's 4.936 is what we've gotten so far for grant approval from Program Open Space. Part of that does require a county match. Part of our match was based upon a third-party partnership, providing a significant amount to it, and then the balance of it being with the county is going to put forth. In the budget book, you'll see that there's design, construction right away, which are standard costs for any capital projects. That design number, I think, is what's leaning toward the number that Mr. Pruski is leaning toward, because we have been in this design process for some time now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to follow up, the county has spent 4.936 million in Project Open Space money on this parcel, is that right?
No, sir.
Okay.
We've spent...
What have we spent?
The purchase price of 1.7 million roughly. We have been reimbursed for that amount. The grant that we got covers design and construction, so the balance of the grant from Program Open Space will be reimbursed once we begin the construction of the project. What's been spent to date is the design fees that are associated with that, which are not, which are more reflective of, I think, encumbered might be the 800,000 that's in the capital budget book.
So all in, we're like 2.5 million?
I'm not sure where you got that number from.
1.7 plus 800, 1.7 million on the buy cost plus 800 on the design fees, 2.5.
And the encumbered, which would be the encumbered contract amount, yes, sir.
Right, okay, so we're 2.5 in, is the point, and if we were to cut today and say we're not doing anything more, that's what we lose, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Matthews, you mentioned some, you know, certain day prices and potentially free days and things like that. I don't see anything in the lease that memorializes that. I do see, I think it's paragraph 20 with additional covenants by the tenant, where they talk about how the RFP has to be honored on the statements in the, in the RFP. Do we have any kind of specifics of which, you know, 35 days a year have to be free, and they'll be published seven days in advance, or there's a max fee they can charge? Do we have anything specific that we'll be voting on, or is it all just kind of to be determined?
Erica Matthews with the Department of Recreation and Parks, I would refer you to page 31 of the RFP.
Okay.
And in there, there's some language that talks about that they have to give the county free days, there has to be rates that are going to be discussed. The county also will have oversight of the operating budget, and part of that includes the fee structure. And as we go through this process, that fee structure will be further fleshed out.
Who will have that oversight?
Recreation and Parks.
So the director?
Yes.
Is that just a unilateral decision, or is there, okay?
So Jessica Layes, Director of Recreation and Parks. The structure of this RFP is just like what we do in our swimming pools and our golf courses. The Director of Recreation and Parks has the final approval of the operating plan on an annual basis, so the budget, the revenues, the expenditures, the fees, the hours of operation will be reviewed every year with the partner. We will have oversight of this, just like we have oversight of all the rest of our public facilities.
Does the RFP set any minimum or maximum?
No, so the RFP doesn't get into that level of detail, the RFP allows us to have that flexibility to enter into an MOU with the partner to determine what all the operations are, what the hours will be, that at this juncture of the project, we're really just looking at the construction of the building, and the RFP was very specific to what we were asking to be built and how that partner would build, fund it, and have an operational plan for that facility.
What happens if you can't agree later on?
If it doesn't get approved?
If, if, if this MOU later on, the parties can't agree?
So, right now, the capital budget funds the outdoor courts that's approved for expenditure, but we, if this lease does not get approved, and we do not have a partner to build the indoor, we would have to make a policy decision in next year's budget. Is the county going to pay for the indoor facility and build it as a tennis facility? Are we going to repurpose this property for another active recreation? It's 33 acres that was purchased with 1.6 million dollars for active recreation. It's not a property that we would not develop or that we would not put active recreation on, that's how we applied for POS, and that was our intent in using it. We chose tennis because tennis was less invasive and had less parking and traffic and issues as like a full multi-deal facility, so if this doesn't approve, we would have some policy decisions to make in the future.
Ms. Hare, sorry, thank you. I'll follow up after. I'll come back to you. Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. So I think this is probably a question for Director Layes. If you, as you were working on with the MOU with the contractor, if they proposed a fee structure that you found unacceptably high for county residents, what would your path be?
We would definitely negotiate that in the MOU. What they, we put in here is public pricing, so we told them when they were bidding on the RFP that we were looking for a public pricing model, and within the RFP, they had to give us financials and give us examples of other facilities that they've operated under public pricing and other public programs that they provided, so they demonstrated that they can do that. So it's part of the reason why the partners are chosen is so that they can provide us with a fee structure that would be acceptable to the department.
So basically, they had a record of creating fee structures that you found acceptable with the umbrella idea of this is a public facility and not a private for-profit facility?
Correct, just like Eisenhower Golf Course, where we just redid the golf course, we redid our operating MOU with our partner there, and we looked at all the other golf courses in the area, we looked at all public golf courses, and we made sure that our rates were set so that they were affordable and provided the opportunity for residents to play golf in a public course.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I'm going to continue this conversation to kind of dial down to some specifics, so if I were to go to one of our pools, I know our adult fee for the day is $6, and youth is $4 if you can show proof of residency. When you talked to the leasing, potential leaseholder, and they shared their public rates, were those in a $6 range, or were those in the $20 range versus for profit, which would maybe be 50 to 100? I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of what daily rate we're talking about, because I do have concerns, if this were to pass, then you get into the MOU and you get into a stalemate where they're not coming to where we would expect them to be for public rate for county residents, what then happens?
So most likely, the vendor, who's going to be an industry expert, is going to come to us with a structure that will, they feel is going to work for the charges, whether it's per court or it's per hour. Right now, the way we structure our tennis courts when we do permit might be for one user group a whole day or for a particular event, so we would have to have those conversations, what is the industry standard and what is the best way to set the rates, and how should we set the rates to make sure that it affords the opportunity? Like Erica said, the RFP was very specific that there would be days that we would have, Wreckin Park would have priority over it, we could put public programming in there, you know, partnering with the schools, partnering... We could put public programming in there, you know, partnering with the schools, partnering with other tennis groups to run clinics and activities. So, there's a lot to still be determined on the operating side, but the first step to getting to that is to entering into a lease so that we can be allowed to even talk with the partner and start working through those operating-type questions. Because right now, all we've done is gone through the RFP and chosen the bidder that scored the highest on the RFP specifications. Once the lease is approved, then we can start working with them on the details and making sure that we, we set the operating model in a way that we wrote out in the RFP so that that's what we get.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The current plan is eight courts outside and eight courts inside, right? Are you reserving space for an additional eight courts outside in the site development plan?
The way that the site is laid out is that we had initially phased the development of the project. We have eliminated what would have been known as Phase 2, which were the clay courts and a couple of the other courts that would have been installed. Right now, those areas will remain green grass space.
But they are available for future expansion at some point to put in 16 outdoor courts and eight indoor courts, right?
We have not shifted any of the other amenities on the site.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because in the documents, the engineer documents that we have, in the first 34 pages, I see 10 site development plans that all show 16 outdoor courts. So, I guess, I'm trying to understand, are we actually doing eight, or are we doing 16, but we're only doing eight now, reserving area to do another eight for future?
When we put the project on pause, those are the documents that you see before you, which show the full master plan build-out. Since then, a lot has changed. We have not re-engaged the design consultant to update the plan. We've sort of been waiting for the lease process to be completed, because there, in addition to what comes from these amendments or the changes that come before us, we still have to coordinate the vendor's site and his package into the site. So, we just sort of paused it.
I guess what I want to understand is when the pause goes away, and this starts moving forward, and this gets built at some point in the future, is the master plan still to have ultimately 16 outdoor courts and eight indoor courts, to have 24 total courts here to allow it to be a tournament venue, or is it going to continue to be eight outside, eight inside?
Jessica Lay is Director for Recreation and Parks. In order for those, that Phase 2 of the master plan to ever come into implementation, it would have to be included in a future capital budget proposed by the county executive and approved by this council. So, we include elements in master plans all the time in park property that never get developed. They are elements that one day may fit on that property, but are never asked for, budgeted or approved in the CIP. So, yes, the master plan has more in it than what is currently in the CIP and approved, or approved by this council for construction. In theory, we could come down in a future year and request additional funding for those courts, and that's why you heard the budget officer say that the county executive has committed to not moving towards Phase 2 and even looking at that back section where the additional courts were as doing something else back there as far as conservation or preservation with no development on it. So, at this time, there is no plan for a Phase 2 request to come down to this council.
Mr. Volkey?
I have more questions.
Okay. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. First, I just want to say that Councilwoman Radbien asked my question much better than I did. So, I appreciate that, that answer in terms of the public pricing that, that all got to it. So, my next question then, I suppose, is at what point do you negotiate this MOU? Because right now, we have the lease in front of us. Let's say the lease is, is passed, and then you go to this phase of the MOU to figure out the pricing?
Yes.
Okay. So, has it ever happened with any of those swimming facilities or anything like that that you have been unable to negotiate the public pricing?
I would say that through the RFP process, because we outline our intent with the fee structure, that it's very, the process is normal to have a vendor chosen and awarded the bid, and then the communications to enter into the operating MOU after the fact. I think that there's a lot that we've outlined in the RFP, and they put together a model as part of their bid to the RFP where they had to enclose their, a suggested fee structure, an example of how they operate now as a public amenity, using a successful model to demonstrate how they can be a good financial partner. And based on all of that, there's a, I guess, a understanding that they would be able to work with us on the terms of the MOU. Maybe not down to the specific dollar amount per court, but the concept of, you know, we're not entering into this RFP to make a partner rich. They understand that. They understand that this is a public amenity that will have public pricing and have free and incentive programs and partnerships with the community, whether it's the elementary school or the department, to operate. So, that's all embedded in our RFP. The details that come out of the MOU are, you know, what are your operating hours going to be? What are those programs? How many days does Wreckin' Park run a program versus how many days do they run a program? And what that proposed fee structure would be? So, I don't anticipate getting to that point and then not being able to negotiate an MOU with an amicable fee structure and, and programming.
Ms. Hare? Can I ask you to...
Oh, I was just saying, thank you.
And Mr. Volkey?
Yep.
If you'll just save for a little bit, let's, because I think the rackets are about to come out and the tennis balls. So, I think we should get to the public hearing. So, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7321. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive quite a bit. We see, received about 250 submissions of online testimony. It was all shared with and seen by the council. It's been added to the record.
And, Madam Secretary, do you happen to have the number that were for or against the bill?
I could compile that for you by the time the public hearing is over, if that would be helpful.
We have enough people signed up to speak. That would be great. Okay. So, as before, I'm going to call the first four people on, on my list, and please come down to the table. Deborah Weller, Donald Weller, David Demers, Patricia Lilick. Ms. Weller? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record. Speak only when you've got a red light there so that it gets recorded, and you'll have two minutes.
Deborah Weller, 120 Linda Lane, Millersville, Maryland, speaking on behalf of Old Millersville Neighborhood Association. We oppose this bill. The county claims there are the need for tennis courts, yet the county's own 2017 Parks and Rec Plant Need Survey showed that indoor tennis is not the top priority. DRP exaggerated the countywide demand for indoor courts, which was ranked ninth out of 25 and tied with three other needs. The survey also states there is a surplus of outdoor courts. Thus, the expenditure of funds on tennis facility negates the recreational needs of county residents for other recreational needs, parks, open space, picnic areas. The county says that this site is a good place for tennis facility because it's centrally located. That's like saying a service demanded by city dwellers in New York and Los Angeles should be in rural Kansas City because it's centrally located. That's ridiculous. The service should be divided and placed close to each user group. Likewise, indoor, smaller indoor tennis facilities should be placed near the users, such as Severna Park, Croft, and Broadneck, Annapolis, which have adequate facilities for such, adequate infrastructure for such facilities. Millersville Park is a bad place for any large-scale facility because of inadequate roads, no public water, sewer, across from the school, burdensome impact on the local community. In May, in a May letter to residents, Pittman admitted that Millersville Park is not a good location, but decided the project had to go forward because of effort and money spent, especially the $835,000 spent on site design. I emphasize 835 because the 1.8 million for buying the land has already been reimbursed. It's irrelevant to this discussion. No one wants to waste money, but because of focusing on the 835, we are focusing on a sunk-cost fallacy, which decides a common, describes a common behavior where we irrationally continue to do something that doesn't make sense because we spent, already spent time and money on it. Please oppose the lease.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weller?
Thank you. My name is Don Weller. I also live at 120 Linda Lane, near the Millersville Park, and I oppose this bill. You should oppose it too, because the RFP, lease, and Coppermine proposal don't provide enough information on the viability, cost, and impacts of the tennis facility. My community has asked lots of questions about the impacts on us. We've asked questions about the hours, the fees, and traffic generating events like graduations and weddings. And an even simpler question, will there be a health and fitness center included or not? DRP has dodged all of these questions, saying that they will work them out with Coppermine after the lease takes effect. And you have heard this same dodge tonight. Under the lease, the county does have the power to review Coppermine's plans every year and reject some parts, but that authority has severe practical limits. Here's why. Coppermine's projections of financial success are based on some mix of tennis and non-tennis uses and on their proposed fees and hours. We know that indoor tennis is a tough business here. Former facilities have failed or switched to other uses. The need for Coppermine to cover costs and make a profit will, in a tough business, will limit DRP's leverage to control fees and costs and to limit non-tennis uses. Finally, the lease is a bad deal. For example, Coppermine is responsible for maintenance and repairs, but the county must pay for any repairs to Coppermine's building that cost more than $50,000. And over 25 years, Coppermine will only pay $105,000 per year in rent for a 33-acre property with all the outdoor facilities already built at county expense. The council can't accept the lease based on vague plans to make key decisions and fix problems later using an authority that's limited by fiscal realities. You have to judge the lease based on the information that you have now, the fees and other things that are included in the Coppermine proposal, the RFP, and the lease.
Thank you, Mr. Weller.
You should reject the lease.
Thank you. Mr. Demers?
David Demers. I live at 70 Linda Lane, Millersville, about a half a mile from this project, the property. And I'm opposed to the approval of this lease agreement. Actually, I'm a tennis enthusiast, and I've been one for many years. The advocates for this project say that there are no public indoor tennis courts in the county, and they're correct. The former Big Vanilla facility filled all of its indoor tennis courts with exercise equipment, TV monitors, and a basketball hoop. The former Severn Valley Racquet Club turned its indoor courts into indoor practice facilities for children's club soccer, lacrosse, baseball teams. In both instant, in all these instances, it was more profitable than indoor tennis. The proposed facility will have the same challenges, only this time the taxpayers will be heavily invested. Should public funds be risked on a venture that so many private companies failed to make work? We, the public, are being asked to place a bet on this project without having access to the projections of how the venture can succeed. These projections were redacted from the public version of the Coppermine proposal. Coppermine's full business plan, which is also currently redacted from the proposal, should and must be available for public and council review before this lease can be approved. There's also an issue of business fairness here. The Coppermine proposal goes beyond providing indoor and outdoor tennis. It also includes services already provided by existing businesses, services like a fitness and training center, physical therapy, wedding and graduation venue, and this is in their proposal, and others. The large public investment in this facility gives Coppermine an unfair advantage over those existing businesses. I don't think that's right. Thank you for your, the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Demers. Ms. Lilick?
Okay. I'm Trish Lilick. I live over in Linda Lane, about three minutes by foot to the park. I oppose the lease in the tennis center project because the county has not followed the limits and standards it imposes on private developers. The county's process for greenlighting the tennis center has not met the requirements that the county imposes on others. The RFP and Coppermine's proposal reveals that the current version of the tennis center is not a park as we thought. It is a commercial-scale tennis and fitness facility. Coppermine envisions a sports tourism destination that will draw users from Washington, Baltimore, Annapolis, and all the communities in between. This vision goes way beyond a park for Millersville or for the county. If a private developer owned this property and tried to build this facility, the county would not let them. The developer would need first a special exception for the RLD zoning, leading to an administrative hearing. The county OPZ would then recommend against the exception for inadequate roads, huge building, huge parking lot, changes to the character of the neighborhood, et cetera, and the Millersville community would vigorously oppose it. The special exception would be denied. The developer would also have to submit a preliminary, finished preliminary development plan, which would be reviewed by the OPZ, other departments, and interested citizens. This preliminary plan would not be approved without a completed and accepted traffic study now due in November of this year. For consistency, the tennis project traffic study should be available for review before the council approves the lease. The county has not met the standards it imposes on private developers despite Mr. Pittman's Smart Growth Campaign promises and the goals embraced in Plan 2040. This is inconsistent and casual observance of rules and leaves citizens more vulnerable to arbitrary actions of the county than to private developers. A county committed, and in closing, a county committed to a smart growth and the Plan 2040 must walk the walk in its own development projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lilick. This panel is dismissed. The next four names on my list are Mary Beth Love, Peter Threadgill, Stacy Nicholson, Are you, Ms. Love?
Yes.
Okay. Stacy Nicholson? Okay. Michael Hoop? Sorry, H-E-U-P. Come on up. Thank you, sir. Ms. Love, you can go ahead and begin.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Mary Beth Love. I live at 881 Cecil Avenue in Millersville. I've been a resident since 1986 of this community and an appointed member of the Millersville Park Tennis Center's Citizen Advisory Committee, created by the then-county executive, Shu, after community outcry and outrage of this uncoordinated DRP project. I, as others have said this evening, request your opposition to Bill 7321, Approval of Lease Agreement for Coppermine Tennis Facility. Excuse me. Since this project began, the community and other county official stakeholders have been disenfranchised from this project development. Early on, four and a half years ago, the CAC, representing the community, offered park design and operational alternatives better suited for our residential low-density zoning community. The CAC has been ignored, disregarded, and since the dissolve of the PPP with the Tennis Alliance, the CAC, the CAC has been omitted from all projects and developmental meetings. This bill does not support what the county and the Department of Parks and Recs considers its core values of responsibility, transparency, collaboration, and communication. This bill supports and approves a commercial, for-profit-based sports complex outside the intended project open space plan. It does not support a county park in a residential area. Our community welcomes a county park. Our community is not opposed to tennis as one of the recreational features of this park. Our community asks our elected officials to oppose this bill and ensure, one, due process of this project is reviewed by the community and other county departments; two, the intent of the scope of this project is maintained; and, three, fiscal responsibility is accounted for by the Department of Parks and Recs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Mr. Threadgill?
Thank you. My name is Peter Threadgill, 1650 Isabella Court, Millersville. I've lived there about 18 years, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the bill. There are a number of issues with this plan, which my neighbors are discussing, but I wanted to focus on the traffic issues and maybe give you a preview of what the traffic study will present. study will present. Millersville Road is a rural residential road which is already overburdened. The intersection with Route 3 is already a failing intersection. At peak traffic times, the red light lasts about three minutes, and even then, you're not guaranteed to make it across Route 3 northbound. At the opposite end, late in the evening, if you don't get to the red light in time to trigger the green light, you'll wind up sitting there for an entire cycle. I don't think we need a large sports facility adding to the traffic in the area, in the neighborhood, and I urge you to reject the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Threadgill. And Mr. Inoa?
Elias Inoa. I live on Millersville Road, and I oppose the lease and tennis center project. The tennis center on Millersville Park Road worsen existing issues on Millersville Road, uh, excuse me, well, existing traffic issues on Millersville Road. This commercial-scale facility will draw traffic to Route 3 and its failing intersection with Millersville Road. The extra traffic will worsen congestion and safety problems on Millersville Road and Cecil Ave. I've complained to the county about the safety concerns on Millersville Road. Just recently, a camera was placed here due to vehicles being pulled out, pulling out in front of emergency vehicles. I've also had three vehicles in my yard. I have two sons, and we work on the garden quite a bit. Due to the extra congestion now, we have vehicles trying to avoid each other, and they wind up in my yard. Unfortunately, things are not thoroughly reviewed and studied until there is a loss of life for property. Extra traffic will go through two places where the South Shore Trail crosses local roads. The proposed site is 350 feet from the Millersville Road Elementary School, possibly impacting school safety. There has been no consultation with the school itself or with the Board of Education on possible traffic issues with the project. The county is studying the traffic impacts and will not be received until November. The county would not allow private developers and would not be able to proceed with the project without a complete approved traffic study. The council must not approve these leases until a traffic study is available for a reasonable period of review by the council and public.
Thank you, Mr. Inoa. Mr. Hoop?
You guys ready? Good evening. My name is Michael Hoep. I am a Special Olympics athlete in Anarundel County, and I live in Davidsonville. I work right down the street at Bidding Bowls Coffee Shop. I play a lot of sports, and I love, or should I say, I absolutely love tennis. I have played at the USA National Games in Seattle, and now, next year, I'm going to be playing at the USA National Special Olympics in Orlando at Walt Disney, at Disneyland. And I also play right here in Maryland for Special Olympics, after receiving coaching from members of the Tennis Alliance of Anarundel County. I have won gold and silver medals. I want to improve and do my best to represent both Maryland and Anarundel County. The problem is, there is no year-round tennis program available to me in our county. My friends in other counties have opportunities to train and play all year. I am proud to be a member of the Tennis Alliance, of the Tennis Community. Please give us a tennis facility that offers opportunities to Special Olympics athletes for year-round programming. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. And please, come by Bidding Bowls to say hello. We have great coffee, and I promise you'll have great service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoep. Okay.
Hopefully, I'll see you guys there, right?
And I grouchily have to remind you all that we can't have applause. It really messes up the recording, so we need to, you can, you can put your hands up and shake them or something. It's silent, but, um, please, no applause. Okay, so this panel is dismissed. Thank you. Now may I have Scott Blacketter, Gretchen Bandy, Libby Sroka, and Henry Thomas. Mr. Blacketter? You may go ahead, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott Blacketter. Thank you for hearing us out. I am here to oppose the Coppermine lease because Millersville Park is simply not the right place for a large commercial tennis center. When my wife and I purchased our home on Millersville Road 24 years ago, we made sure that our property was entirely surrounded by residential low-density zoning. We wanted to make sure that there would not be any commercial development nearby, and we trusted that the county would help make sure that didn't happen. Well, there's a loophole, as you all know. When the county purchases property, they can ignore the zoning laws, and that's what is happening. The Pittman administration plans to do just that and pave this farm. As you know, the plan includes a commercial-style destination tennis and sports complex operated by a for-profit corporation. That's a business. That's not a park. This will pull additional traffic from all over the county to already overburdened Millersville Road. The expansive paving will exacerbate the already existing stormwater management issues. The lighted courts and the long hours will turn our rural oasis into an extension of the Route 3 mess. Over the last four years, I've been part of the CAC, appointed by the county, and we have tried to work with recs and parks, yet our input has been entirely ignored. As we have repeated, a more appropriate use of this property would be a low-impact park, one that is not lighted and with a gate that closes at dusk. Absolutely nothing like what is planned. The overdevelopment of nearby Route 3 is an embarrassment, but at least Route 3 defines it. This tennis center would expand that sprawl deep into our community. So please, vote against this lease, put the tennis mecca in a commercial location, and let's work together to find an appropriate use for Millersville Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blacketter. Ms. Bandy?
My name is Gretchen Bandy. I live at 1594 Millersville Road. Our property adjoins the proposed tennis park. As has been or will be mentioned tonight, there are many concerns that our neighborhood has about the planned tennis facility and that all county residents should be concerned about, the wasteful funds being thrown at this in the name of receiving state funds. I want to be very specific about a particular issue, the lack of adequate research into stormwater management. I do not for a second believe that any of the studies so far have any legitimacy, any more than the BS traffic study or other county ad hoc disinformation. All the adjoining properties to the proposed park, mine included, have significant standing water issues. Right here on my device, I have pictures from last spring of the standing water on our property. It was not a tropical storm or an anomaly. It was typical spring weather. Some may say that the construction will solve our problems. How? By paving paradise? Put up a parking lot? Okay, maybe you do, but guess what? At what cost? We all know the cost. You divert the water into Jabba's Run and other tributaries of the Severn River, and therefore, the river and the Chesapeake Bay. And suddenly, the tributaries and the river and the bay are again compromised. And the crabs and the rockfish and the clams and the oysters, let alone the important plants and animals that most of us can't even name, are not so important that we can't even keep the ecological balance of the largest estuary in the U.S., all compromised again. And for what? So we have more hardly-used tennis courts? And as an aside, for any letters or voices in support of this that outnumber ours, keep in mind how many of them live in our community. I would beg you, if any, at all, there may not be a single letter of support that actually lives in our community. Also, you've asked the community for an alternative. We've given it to you, a more traditional park with limited impermeable surface. We are happy to discuss this further. Please vote no. I just don't get it.
Thank you, Ms. Bandy. Ms. Sroka?
My name is Elizabeth Sroka. I am a resident of Millersville, and I live close to the Millersville Park. I am against the Coppermine lease and the tennis project. I would like to speak to the topic of equity. The Coppermine proposal is too expensive for many county residents. Public money and precious public parkland should be used to create opportunities for all. Coppermine's proposed membership and court fees, as stated on page 61 of the proposal, are as high or higher than surrounding private facilities. The Coppermine proposal and marketing literature says their customers are affluent, and Coppermine aspires to attract users from outside our county, creating a sport tourism destination for tennis. A high-fee tennis and fitness center does not support county commitments to equity as stated in the Department of Recreation and Parks' vision and the new general development plan 2040. The state's program open space, which is partly funding the tennis center, requires that fees for program open space-funded facilities be reasonable, accessible to the general public, and go to maintain the facility. Parks and Recreation say they will make the park accessible and use their authority to approve Coppermine's fees, and all of this will be worked out after the facility has been built or the lease signed. But Coppermine's projection of the financial success are based on fees and activities in their proposal. The fiscal realities of covering costs and making a profit will limit Parks and Recs' ability to change fees. The lease cannot be approved on plans to figure things out later. It must be evaluated on the best and only information available, the information in the RFP, the lease, and Coppermine's proposal. A less expensive plan for Millersville Park could free funds to create or rehabilitate parks in underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sroka. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening. My name is Henry Thomas. I live at 1305 Anglesey Drive in Davidsonville. When discussing the proposed lease with Coppermine, transparency is a problem. We know, excuse me, I need to read this. We know there must be fees for services. This cannot be tennis for everybody for free. But we need to know where the money comes from and where it goes, because that will tell us about the operational priorities of the business. We, the public, do not have access to those Coppermine numbers because they are redacted. But the public and the county deserve a sophisticated analysis of the Coppermine proposal. From what we can see, this is what the Coppermine proposal does tell us. One, the economics of tennis cannot support a business that must service $6 million in debt, make payments to the county, and produce adequate return on equity. Two, Coppermine will focus its operations on a highly profitable health club where tennis is offered as one of many options for members. Three, to meet its business objective, maximum profit, over the long term, the Coppermine business at Millersville Park must focus its resources, most importantly, indoor space, on uses more profitable than tennis. Four, this means that no matter what the fees for tennis, affordable market or above market, in the long run, there will be a severe limitation on the availability of tennis, whether it's court time, affordable programming, training, community-based outreach, tournaments, and so on. This is not the tennis center that was envisioned over long years of study and planning. I urge you to reject the proposed lease with Coppermine and to look to the options available to do it right. As a final note, I would just like to know, make it clear that I am intimately familiar with the RFP, and it very clearly states that it is the plan of the county to have 16 courts outdoors completed before the indoor building is completed. So I think we should look to some of the things that are said and make sure we have the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. This panel is dismissed. And may I have Russell Hester, Stacia Bontempo, Jack Sroka, and Colin Dowling. Mr. Hester?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Sroka? Is that you, Mr. Sroka? Okay. So who do I not have? Mr. Dowling. Colin Dowling? Okay. Jeffrey DeCaro? Come on down. Louise Thomas? Okay, we have a full table. Mr. Hester, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Russell Hester, Odenton, Maryland. I'd like to first thank Mr. Pruski for directly responding to my email on this subject matter. Over 30 years now, I've been a resident of Anarundel County, both me and my family. I am an avid tennis player and currently a tennis coach at Arundel High School. And I wanted to speak to the overall demand of the tennis facility, and I'm in support of the Maryland Tennis Center construction, but I am opposed to the Coppermine proposal. Rather, I'm in favor of the alternative proposals from JTCC. Over the last two years, there's been an explosion of interest in tennis, amplified by the pandemic. People are flocking to courts, leading many situations where me, living in Piney Orchard, trying to find a tennis court within our community, everything taken, driving a little extra to go to Arundel High School, everything's taken, then middle school over in Crofton, everything taken, only to find the last court at Crofton High School, which, up until recently, is pretty much a secret within the tennis community. But through, see, they're laughing, yeah. But through that experience, my son, who is Mid-Atlantic Ambassador for Junior Tennis at USTA, made the observation that there was a diverse crowd using these courts, not committed, you know, hardcore tennis players, but people from all walks of life, all skill levels, and all ages. And the best way to make the use of our funds and efforts is to consider something like JTCC, who have a proven track record as a 501(c)(3) organization, to manage such a facility successfully and sustainably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Ms. Bontempo?
Yes, hi. I'm Stacia Bontempo. I'm at 1023 Cars Road in Annapolis. I am a USTA tennis player, a parent of a high school tennis player, a coach at a high school, president of the Anarundel County Tennis Association, and the lead USTA coordinator for our county. I want to advocate my strong support for the Millersville Tennis Center. We lack adequate facilities in our county, most notably indoor facilities. Tennis is a lifelong sport. Notably, our 65-and-over USTA leagues are the largest and strongest in Maryland. In the 12 years I've been running leagues, I've seen people's lives changed by the health and social benefits of organized year-round tennis. In order to support the 2,900-plus adult players as well as the hundreds of youth players, we need this facility. In the winter, most of our youth must play out of county to continue playing their sport. I would ask for stipulation that this facility does not become a venue for other sports like lacrosse, soccer, et cetera, as the former Severn Valley Tennis Center has become. We truly need a dedicated tennis facility, which would limit the traffic that lacrosse, soccer, and pickleball would bring. As a reminder, there are three public indoor tennis facilities in nearby PG County, as well as SportFit and Bowie. The only indoor facility in Anarundel County is Navy Brigade in Annapolis, which is primarily for Navy tennis, for their practices and matches, and the cost is prohibited for many players, at $19, $22 for 90 minutes of tennis per player. I would please ask for your support for the Millersville Tennis Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bontempo. Mr. Sroka?
Good evening. My name is Jack Sroka. I've been a, in my 71 years of life, I've been a resident within a half a mile for 54 years of this proposed facility. It would be an understatement to say I know the area. I would question each one of the council persons, how many have driven through the area? I know Mr. Pruski has. So you know that is, it is certainly rural, almost bucolic. To put what is very much so a commercial facility in that area is ludicrous. And that's what this lease would be doing, would be putting a commercial facility. How many people in the council have mentioned, "Mr. Pickard, you said how we spend our tax dollars is important." That's a direct quote of what you said tonight. Over on this end, I can't count how many times the word "cost" came up. Councilman Pruski, you asked questions of the panel that was up here first. No questions were answered. No questions were answered. It was, to quote Parks and Recreation, "Oh, they understand this, they understand that," talking about the fees. So here we are, talking about spending money for, or, well, signing a lease, rather, with all questions and no answers. Councilman Polk, you said, "We'd be losing $2.5 million." I'm sorry to tell you, but the land is still going to be there. We're not losing it. It would be better served for the park that would serve the community and not a commercial enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sroka. Ms. Thomas?
Louise Gangler-Thomas, 1305 Anglesey Drive, Davidsonville. I'm president of the Tennis Alliance of Anarundel County, a not-for-profit organization that's worked closely with Reckon Parks and with the county to support this much-needed project. Let's be clear to start with, this is not a referendum on the project. The project has gone through the process every step of the way. Yes, there's still more traffic studies that let that play out, the environmental studies have been addressed. Right here, tonight, we're discussing the lease with Coppermine, and the one thing we agree with, with the county local residents here, we don't think that this is the right lease. We agree with you on that one. It's not the project that we were promised, and it's not consistent with the goals of the public purpose. This project was always intended to be public purpose, was intended to be a park with programming for all, like Michael Hoopla was here and the whole checklist. I've gone off script. But no amendment made here tonight can change the fact that Coppermine is a for-profit entity with a business model that focuses on profit, not public benefit. You know, where in the RFP does Coppermine have any experience in delivering the community outreach? Where are the controls of the operations? There is another option out there, and if you all read my article in yesterday's Capital, you'll see that there's a very good option out there in a qualified bidder, JTCC. The community people, what you're hearing and all the emails that you're getting and the speakers here, is what we all want. There's a collective vision out there, and it's a vision for a tennis center that serves all residents, that expands affordable programming, and that's not the vision that's in this lease. The lease should be rejected. There's a way to do this project, and there's a way to do it right. Please send the lease back and come back with something better.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. This panel is dismissed. And the last four names I have on the list who signed up in advance are about to be mispronounced by me. Savario Pellegrino, King Julius Caesar, Jim Hints, and Jessica Tiller.
You did better than those.
Only after many, many times getting everyone's name wrong. Comes with the job. Mr. Pellegrino? Who's first? Okay. If you're ready?
I'm first.
Yep. Name and address for the record, please, in two minutes.
Hi, my name is Savario Pellegrino. I live at 505 French Point Court, Millersville. I'm 70 years old. Been playing tennis since I'm about, since 30 years old. I am a senior tennis player. I have two implants. When I first came here in '06, I played on soft courts over Severn Valley. And that was hard to get to with all the senior players because we want to play on soft courts. But API came in a few years later, and they changed the business model, as you see there. And at Big Vanilla, they did the same thing, and they pushed out the tennis. So now I go out, I go up to Columbia and play on soft courts up there because there's none in Anarundel County. Also, people come, go up there from Montgomery County, from Baltimore County, and so forth. There's a big senior contingent that loves soft courts, okay? If Coppermine gets this lease, I see them doing the same thing that API did. They just push out the tennis courts, and soft courts are, they cost more to maintain. So that'll probably be the first ones to be pushed out, okay? I, I want this project to go through, but I would love to see amendments that it's tennis-only, okay? It's the Millersville Tennis Center or the Coppermine Tennis Center. It's tennis. It's not tennis and health club. There's a, there's about four health clubs within five minutes of my home. I belong to one of them. If there's another big health club, you see smaller health clubs going up almost every They're cheaper. People don't want to travel far away to go to their health club. They want close. So I don't see a tennis and health club fairly flying here.
Thank you, Mr. Pellegrino. Mr. Caesar?
Hi. King Julius Caesar, 1011 Hanson Street, Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you for the opportunity. So I help teach with Louise Thomas, who's the heart and soul of Tennis Alliance, which is in charge of tennis involvement and community outreach, who I started volunteering for when I was in high school. And two instances today is all I need to talk about. Last fall, working with Tennis Alliance, we coached kids from Housing Authority of Annapolis, who we partnered with for multiple weeks, and one kid specifically, to Ron Smith, who's never played before, was excited and engaged throughout the whole hour and a half. At the end, I asked him if he likes tennis, even though I could tell he did. He said yes, and then asked me if I could coach him. I said, "Of course," and we exchanged numbers. Next week, he wasn't at the next session because apparently his family moved, so I never got the chance. And this morning, I texted him, asking how he and his family are doing, and later Ron sent me a picture of his racket, saying, "Still got my tennis racket," which I was really happy to hear about, but was sad to find out that he followed up, saying he hasn't been using it because there's no tennis courts or any opportunities around him. Just coming from work before this meeting, my last customers happened to be two kids, Oscar and Jennifer Gomez-Gallardo, and their parents. These kids, we taught this summer, were involved with Centro de Ayuda, or as some of you may know them as Center of Help, which is an organization geared towards providing educational services to the immigrant community in this county. The older one told me that she's now playing high school tennis, and I truly believe that if not for the opportunity that programs like Tennis Alliance provide and have provided, she wouldn't be involved. So I know firsthand, and you know, the initiative that this county can take to help reconnect and provide for the communities that the county has worked hard to build. And lastly, this would set a precedent for the other lame counties on how Anarundel County runs things. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Caesar. Well done. Nice to have a youth joining us. I appreciate it. Mr. Hints?
Hi. Thanks for staying so late to hear my two minutes' worth. I'm Jim Hints. I live at 905 Workman Drive in Millersville. My front door is exactly one mile from this piece of land that we're talking about. And I had pages and pages of notes. I wrote an email. I'd like to read the first sentence of my email in case you don't remember me. "A commercial development across from an elementary school on a residential street that is already severely burdened by rampant overdevelopment a mere mile away," the overdevelopment, that is, "is a mere mile away on Route 3 with the new Wawa and Royal Farms." Just makes no sense. As other people have said better than me, Route 3 is like the new Rockville Pike or it's downtown Wildorf. Millersville Road is now a cut-through for general's highway traffic and Route 3 traffic. If I bought a house, which I did, in an RLD-zoned area, I would be very, very disappointed to see this, this facility get built. I looked up on the Anarundel County website what RLD zoning stands for, and the exact text said, "It's intended for rural, single-family detached, low-density housing with approximately one house per five acres." This is not, this just doesn't belong in this, nothing against tennis, but this facility does not belong in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hints. And I did recognize your email when you were reading that line. Okay, Ms. Tiller?
Hi, I'm Jessica Tiller. I'm at 904 Indian Woods Lane in Millersville. As a Millersville resident, Anarundel County business owner, and member of the Indian Landing Community Association Board, I'm strongly urging you to vote no to the Coppermine Tennis Courts Bill Number 7321. Why? Number one, it's expensive. This will cost somewhere around $10 million until it's all said and done. That money could be better spent elsewhere. The reality is, this is taxpayer money. I worked very hard my entire life, including three jobs to put myself through college. Even now, as a small business owner, I have no guarantee of a paycheck. I take financial responsibility seriously, and it seems that once again, government is not. Two, it is unlikely to succeed. Past experiences show private indoor tennis venues in the area have failed. Three, the fees that Coppermine, the fees that Coppermine will charge will be out of reach for many of our working-class residents. With inflation soaring, membership is unrealistic for our residents. Four, it is being built for those who live outside of our Millersville-Anarundel County area, yet we will shoulder the costs as well as the traffic and safety burdens. Five, the additional traffic will make existing congestion even worse, as we've been hearing, for those of us who live and work in the Millersville area. Six, one of the key reasons, in my personal opinion, it will consume undeveloped land in a very residential rural area. It's a shame that expensive undeveloped land will be used when there is so much existing land in close proximity to something like this, such as the old mental institution right down the road. There is plenty of space sitting there, literally rotting. Someone else had suggested looking at empty spaces in one of the many vacant malls or town centers nearby. And I just want to conclude with, you know, please keep in mind, we are voters, and we will remember when time comes to go to the polls. And just finally, we aren't against tennis, just this location.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. This panel is dismissed. And is there anybody else who did not sign up in advance who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7321? If so, please come to the table now. When, your, mic needs to be on first. There you go.
My name's Barbara Stack. I'm a resident of Crownsville 604 Topland Drive. I've been a tennis professional for about 40 years, so I probably hit more tennis balls than almost anybody in here. Maybe Louise has got me there, but you might remember my email as well, and I apologize in advance. But I'm strictly opposed to the tennis center at Millersville Park being built for two reasons. One, well, actually, three now, that the Coppermine is involved. One is that it's the wrong facility in the wrong place. The scope of the project is completely out of line with the needs in the county, completely out of line with that. You absolutely don't need outdoor courts. You need indoor, agreed with that, at a different location, which I'll mention at the end, that might be possible. This tells me, since the scope of the project's so large, this tells me it's really not for Anarundel County residents, tax-paying residents. You'd be using my tax dollars to prop up a for-profit company, which obviously plans to solicit non-county residents to make it viable. Second thing, to inject a huge facility like that, which is associated lighting, paving, noise, traffic, et cetera, into a residential community, as you have heard loud and clear tonight, is preposterous. Building a corridor park, for instance, just thinking off my head here, where infrastructure already exists, other uses are already bringing people there, it's within two miles of residence, hotels, highways. Take a football field at Corridor Park. Six-court facility, 1.3 acres, that's how big a football field. You could put six courts in there. You have a parking lot, you got lighting. If you put a facility like this in a residential neighborhood, you will destroy that neighborhood because of the lighting of the outdoor courts. That's one thing for sure. So this has kind of been...
Your time, your time has expired, but thank you. Thank you. Next, sir?
Yes, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I don't know why my name wasn't on your list, but anyway, I have a couple concerns, and some of these things I haven't...
Sir, first, we do need to know your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Name's Wayne West. I live at 859 Whisper Drive. Lived in Anarundel County since 1973. I've lived at this location since 1980, which was, by the way, before Whisper Drive existed. And it just so happens that this wonderful, wonderful facility is right behind my property, okay? There's a, I have a water management area, and then there's the farm, okay? And so I know how this works because, you see, I-97 took one, went right through one of my pastures years ago. That was a whole lot of fun. And now I got, for lack of a better term, I've got SportsCom box that wants to come up my back end. And so that isn't making me very happy either, okay? But there's a couple of, couple other major concerns I have, and that is due to the overdevelopment of that area in general, what has boiled down to in the last, last few years. Of course, they expanded and refurbished most of the elementary school, which needed to be done. And by the way, I have three grandchildren going there, so I'm all happy about that. My three kids also went there, so I'm kind of attached to that. They also have developed, put a development in on Maud Lane off of Severn Chapel Road that also comes up through Cecil Avenue, that rebuilt a development, high-end development on Waterbury Road. And there's been numerous developments going on St. Stephen's Church Road. This is all within a mile of this, okay? And now they've sold the Foxball Farm, which is between Tanner Gere Forest and Baldwin Hills, and that's been approved for over 50 new homes in there. And the Wilson Farm has also been, off of Severn Chapel, been bought by developers, so I'm, I'm sure they're going to grow more houses there, too. But the problem is, over the last two or three years, the wells in the area have been failing. They've been failing because the aquifers are starting to dry up. They're now going down to the third-level aquifer for water.
Sir, I have to ask you to conclude your testimony.
Do I get two minutes?
Yeah. Did you want to conclude your thought?
I got one other small thing I want to mention because nobody's mentioned it tonight, and that's, yes, the traffic is horrific because of all this development. This sports center isn't going to make it any better, and I'm worried about what it's going to do to the aquifer, but also Millersville Road is lined with historical properties. Most of them are in the Maryland Historical Trust, and the guy that runs that, it's this guy by the name of Larry Hogan, and his function is to preserve these properties, not pave them.
Thank you, sir. You in the green, sir?
Yes. Alan Switzman, 1939, I-ridge Road, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. I've been, been a member of Anarundel County for 25 years now, and I'm a lifer, tennis player. And I'd like to play tennis like my father did until he was 84, but he always got to play on soft courts, as they say, hard-to courts. And to play tennis is actually, it's a very grueling sport on your body. And if we don't get to play, I'm not saying that this is the right location. I'm just saying there's a need for indoor courts so that we could play in the wintertime because, I mean, that's a lot of months there that you can't play tennis unless you're playing inside. It's hard to play in the, in the below 50 degrees. And then it's a, so there is a tremendous health benefit to us, and as you reach retirement, and this is what I do, well, I'd like to stay in this county, but I'm not thinking, I'm thinking of leaving this county so that I can enjoy my sport. Like, I have friends who play golf. Like, I have friends who play golf. You know, they can't play golf in the winter, you know, so they're gonna, they'll go down to Florida to play golf, but we're lucky here. We can build an indoor court, indoor courts, lighted courts. It's hard, I mean, at night, to play tennis even outdoors, because there are very few lit courts. But I would enjoy playing tennis in this county, and I'd have to, I'm sure there are a lot of other people who can't afford to go to Columbia, would like to stay in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzman. And ma'am?
Hi, my name is Jennifer McGowan, and I live at 139 Spaview Avenue in Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm a tennis player. But I don't just play tennis for fun with my family and friends. I'm also privileged to be part of some of the Tennis Alliance outreach programming. I teach with King, who you guys heard earlier. And just this past summer, some of the tennis clinics that we have taught have benefited children served by the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis, children served by the Center of Help, children in the Brooklyn Park Head Start Program, and weekly clinics for Special Olympic athletes, you heard from Michael earlier. There's many additional outreach programs. But we've had to scramble for courts to make these programs happen. And as of next week, they will all be over for the season, because there's no indoor facilities in Anarundel County to continue to serve these underserved communities and This is a type of community programming that we were promised when the vision of an Anarundel County tennis facility was first conceived. I understand from the highly redacted contract currently under consideration, it is a for-profit venture, and it's doubtful that they're motivated to offer low-cost and free programming. There's been some discussion about whether or not this is the right place. This is property, this is public land that the county already owns, and the county has a fiduciary duty to use this property to the benefit of the greatest number of citizens of Anarundel County. We're not asking for anything special here. This is, we want a facility that is comparable to those that are in most counties of Maryland already.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan.
For letting me share.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed, and if there's anybody else in the audience who did not sign up to speak, who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7321, now's the time to come down to the Okay, seeing it looks like no one else who would like to speak, the public hearing on Bill Number 7321 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7321.
Madam Chair, would you like to know the tally?
Oh, yes, I would.
Of the, it was 169 out of those 250 were in support, 81 out of 250 were opposed.
Thank you.
And now, I shall read the title of Bill Number 7321. Bill Number 7321, An Ordinance Concerning Approval of Lease Agreement for Copper Mine Tennis Facility.
Thank you. We do have one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
This amendment requires that any modification to the scope of the project under the Copper Mine lease agreement be approved by ordinance of the county council.
This amendment is introduced by Mr. Pruski and Ms. Pickard, so, Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilman Andrew Pruski. So as you heard by the testimony, I've met with a lot of the residents in Millersville many times. I can't count. But obviously, residents have legitimate concerns. Obviously, from the past, we've had dialogue. There's definitely lessons to be learned as we go forward with projects, but particularly, I want to talk about this amendment. So when I first met on this project, there was a proposal by the previous Parks and Recs Director and also previous administration, that this was going to be 24 courts and eight inside, and I almost flipped a lid, because obviously, the scope of what was being proposed, I think, was obviously too big. Over time, this has obviously been reduced, but I also think that there needs to be another mechanism in place for two reasons. Number one, any future funding obviously goes to the budget process, so that's number one. But number two, any modification of the scope of the project, again, where my colleagues vote, I know I've spoken with some of you for this lease agreement, should be approved by the county council. I believe that when we look at this overall, certainly, the Parks and Recs Department has managed this, but I believe that there has to be a county council say, if this project does any changes or scope for the future. I just think that has to be part of the record, just as a safe, you know, part of the record. So anyways, I'd ask for your support, and thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Allison Pickard, so moved, motion to adopt.
And a second?
Rodvian, second.
Thank you both. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Administration supports the amendment. Want to thank Councilman Pruski for working with us. We agree that any future modification would need county council approval. If anybody on the panel has anything to add, y'all are the experts, but we support.
Are there any questions from the council? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, that means Bill Number 7321, as amended, will be heard on October 18th, 2021. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7421.
Bill Number 7421, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development
Ms. Hare, when you're ready. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I won't be laborless, because we spoke about this at the work session. This bill grants exemptions to the site development plan process for certain farming activities.
Could I ask everyone to please keep your voices down? We're still having our meeting. Thank you.
For certain farming activities. Some of these came from constituents, some of this came out of Bill 8620, but essentially, we're finding that, you know, farmers are having difficulty with the direct sales to consumers in particular, so, and you know, a lot of folks, myself included, enjoy being able to go straight to a farm and buy produce or whatnot, but the process by which the farmers have to go through planning and zoning in this site development plan is pretty burdensome and expensive to put up, you know, a small produce stand on their property. So, thank you to Planning and Zoning for all the work and feedback on that. Thanks to the Ag Commission, who also took a review of this. Thanks to the administration for giving feedback as well. But this essentially, you know, says that if you're building an agricultural building, or you've got this accessory use, like a farm store or a stand that sells farm products, and there's a limit cumulative of 1,200 square feet of floor area and a cumulative limit of disturbance of less than 5,000 square feet, you don't have to go through the full site development plan process. I think I said at the work session, but those numbers came from stormwater, and that's that trigger for stormwater management, so you have to be under that limit anyways. But with all of that, I'd ask for my colleague's support.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the tables are DCAO, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, from OPZ, Ms. Lynn Miller, and from Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. Good to see you tonight. So, repeat or echo the comments from Councilwoman Hare. Appreciate the collaborative effort in crafting this bill. I owe an apology to Ms. Rhodes. She identified what we were hoping to be a friendly amendment, and it got lost in my email, and I never brought it forward, so I pledge to Councilwoman Hare to continue working together on removing some of these regulatory burdens on farmers that Ms. Rhodes had identified, and we discussed at the work session. To sort of echo, the administration brought forward a bill, I think it was 8620, last year, and this bill, the concept of this bill was a big component of that bill. That bill had some other issues that we don't need to rehash, but this part of the legislation, I think everybody was unanimous in agreement, was a good idea. So with that, administration asks for your support, and we're happy to support this bill. Thank you.
Okay, so can I get clarification? It sounds like there's, there could be a friendly amendment?
No, apologies, Madam Chair. Pete Barron, again, we're going to work on a future bill that would address some of the regulatory issues that were discussed. This bill is ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Well, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7421. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did receive two submissions through the online testimony tool for Bill 7421. That was shared with the whole council, and it's been added to the record.
All right, we'll get to the in-person hearing. We have one person signed up, but that person has been absent for the rest of our meeting, and so I'm not going to call her name again. Is there, is there anybody who's still in the audience who does not work for the county and wants to make a statement? We have a taker. Please come on down. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Andrew Subrazinski, 317 Clifton Avenue, Arnold, Maryland. Over the past few years, I've become familiar with the site development process, and what I've come to understand is that it's basically the same, no matter what size of business you're going to be working on. It's also very costly, $40,000 to $50,000 where it starts, and only gets more for the complexity. This is a large barrier and a burden for small farm businesses, and this bill will help those small farms. The 1,200-square-foot limit that's in the bill almost guarantees it's sticking to smaller farms, large commercial farms that'll be looking to build larger complexes that'll still be covered under the site development process. This bill is a much-needed relief to all of our small farms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making the trek. Okay, looks like nobody else wants to speak on this bill, therefore, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 7421. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7421.
Bill Number 7421, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development Exemptions.
Anybody else? Ms. Hare?
I just want to say thank you, sir, for staying with us so late.
All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7421.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 7421 is passed.
Thank you. Moving on, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7521.
Bill Number 7521, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Community Meetings, Exemption for In-Kind Replacements.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I was really hoping the news channel was sticking around for this bill, but I guess not. This bill is pretty self-explanatory. It says that if you are doing an in-kind replacement of something like a deck or a pool surround, you do not have to go through the process of a community meeting, and I ask for your support this evening.
Mr. Barron, any friendly amendments?
Pete Barron with the administration. I got the same team sticking with me, Ms. Rhodes, Ms. Miller, Ms. Kenny. Happy to answer any questions. As we stated at the work session, we support.
It's getting late, so I'm going to get loopy, and my jokes are going to be more frequent, and can't tell, better or worse. Okay, does anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7521. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything.
And is there anyone in this room who would like to come testify on Bill Number 7521? Seeing no one standing up, the public hearing on Bill Number 7521 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7521.
Bill Number 7521, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Community Meetings, Exemption for In-Kind Replacements.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7521.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 7521 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7621.
Bill Number 7621, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Credits, Business Entities Affected by a State of Emergency.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. It is getting late, so I'll be brief. This is a big bill in a little package. We discussed it at the work session. It's a tax relief bill. It provides a tax credit to businesses that were affected by the COVID pandemic, and the idea would be to try to help them with their tax bill, to the extent that they were unable to make revenue during the COVID emergency closures.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining or sticking with us is our Budget Officer, Mr. Trumbauer. Ms. McQuaid, our Finance Director, and Ms. Good is also in the audience. Ms. McQuaid's with me. Ms. Good is here from Finance, has stuck it out, figured, recognized you. And Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law is here. As the administration stated at the work session, appreciate the intent, however, this bill is the wrong tool to provide relief. We have a couple of concerns, from the cost of the bill, to the burden to implement it, to who this will be helping, and in the interest of time, happy to dive a little bit deeper on those, but folks at the panel might be able to better answer some of the questions. Through the CARES Act and the other federal relief programs, including the ARPA program, the county has distributed millions of dollars in assistance, headed up by our Economic Development Corporation. We are continuing to explore ways to reduce regulatory burdens and provide assistance to businesses. As an example, the bill that was introduced this evening on outdoor dining, which hopefully will help our restaurants recover, you know, I'll just, I'll leave it on there, and I do want to turn it over to Ms. McQuaid to talk a little bit about the complexity of implementing something like this, and then we'll take any questions you may have.
Sorry, I'm very tired. This is past my bedtime, just so everybody knows. And the hours aren't working as well either. So Karen McQuaid, Office of Finance. So, the Office of Finance, we do have some concerns about the tax credit, mainly in the areas of administering the tax credit, as well as the major impact it would have on the county's tax revenue. Well, I'll take, it'll take more time to do a thorough review of the requirements in implementing the tax credit, because it is very complex. I'm going to share just some of the areas that we have some concerns with, that probably need to be addressed in the bill. So, we do expect we'll have some additional comments as we spend some more time on it, and if needed, develop the application and procedures for implementing. So, we have some concerns that some of the definitions may be overly broad, and can cause some problems with administering the tax... some problems with administering the tax credit. In order to properly administer the tax credit, a tremendous volume of documentation will be required from the applicants in order to ensure the applicant is eligible for the tax credit, and that the information that they provide to the county is valid, and that we have all the information needed to accurately calculate the amount of the tax credit. Just some things, just to talk about some overviews and some of the definitions, some of the verifications for the, that finance is going to need, businesses registered with ESTAT, we have a certificate of good standing, the businesses paid all their taxes, we'll have to verify all prior tax payments. The, originally, the bill said revenue, and I think there's going to be an amendment on there for net income, but one of the issues is just really trying to determine, so what caused the loss of this? Was it the closure, the, you know, was it how the pandemic affected the losses? So just trying to determine those is going to be a little bit difficult. We'll need to determine, based on the legal structure of the business, what forms would be required and what metrics would be used in calculating the tax credit. There's different businesses, and so we'd have to look at whatever forms and then determine which tax forms or whatever we would use, whether it be state or federal or whatever. Under creation, we have, there's a tax credit for the county, real property taxes imposed on property that is owned or leased by a business affected by the state of emergency. So if a business entity is not the property owner, the business entity is going to have to provide us with copies of their leases or any other documentation that's required to show that they're contractually liable for paying the county taxes for prior years in the year of the tax credit. The owner of the leased property may be required to certify that they have leased the property, and the lessor shall reduce the amount of the tax credit given to them, because we have to give it back to whoever owns the property, and that they're going to give the lessy the amount back for which they're contractually obligated under the lease. If the business entity is not the property owner, acknowledgement from the property owner that the property owner is aware that the business entity is applying for the credit, and if the tax credit is granted and later needs to be recaptured, the property owner is ultimately responsible for payment of the property taxes back on the tax credit. Just in eligibility, it talked a little bit about reduction of revenue or net income with the amendment for the calendar year, so it talked about the variances in year over year. That might create somewhat of a problem, because a lot of businesses are in a fiscal year, not on a calendar year, so using the word "calendar" might be an issue. We might have to change that a little bit. And, you know, we may need, we're still trying to determine what times, what kinds of requirements we'll need, maybe possibly audited financial statements, something to prove what the, something that we can verify what the revenue or net income or whatever would be. The, while the April 1st deadline is important to finance, to have time to approve the applications, it may be problematic for many businesses, because a lot of them file extensions on their tax returns, so if we need a tax return back, it could be a problem for them trying to meet the eligibility and filing requirements, so that would need to be addressed. And then, in order to determine the eligibility of revenue or net income, there'd be an extensive review of the, possibly the financial statements and the tax returns, and we'd need to make sure that we have qualified people that can do that. Business tax returns and, you know, would, might be a little more difficult to sort of hone in on what we need to analyze. It also said the business must continue to operate the location for which the tax credit is sought, so for businesses within, with multiple locations in the county, we need a breakdown, like, so if they have two businesses, we'd need a breakdown from their tax returns, they might follow them together, we'd need a breakdown of each of those businesses. So, let's see. As noted, you know, there could be other concerns and areas that would need to be addressed, so we'd need to sort of research some of those areas to make sure that we're covering everything, especially when we do an application, when we do an application for it. And we'd need to work closely with the Office of Law to ensure that we have the legal authority to work out the documentation that we need, so. And also, just want to state, the Office of Finance will do whatever is needed to ensure the proper implementation of any tax credit or any, any bill passed by the council, so we'll do whatever we need to do on it, so.
Thank you, Ms. McQuade. For someone that's past your bedtime, you didn't put in a thorough job. Okay, well, then, are there questions from the council? Mr. Volkey, do you want to respond now? Go ahead.
Thank you, yes, Madam Chair. Ms. McQuade, you've had almost as much coffee as I have, so.
I can break that lead, so.
Oh, wow. Jeez, that's really good. So I guess my question is, I hear you on a lot of these concerns, and I get it. Do you have some kind of a marked-up version of the bill? If we hold this bill, would you be able to work on that, and then we could get some amendments from you? I just want to make sure that we're not just amending it, kind of to stall it, like, if there are actual amendments that we can put in that are going to address your concerns, I want to see them.
Well, yeah, a lot of these points would need to be included.
Fleshed out and do amendments, right.
And Mr. Volkey, I mean, the administration's position is there are much more effective ways to provide businesses with assistance than a property tax credit, so, I mean, I don't see any amendments, even if you got this to a place where finance could administer it, as a matter of policy, the administration would be opposed to, to this approach. I encourage you to work with the administration, work with AEDC. We've distributed, I think, $31 million in aid to local businesses and residents. We are continuing to roll out the ARPA, the federal relief, the most recent federal relief. We are open to suggestions. We want to partner with our local businesses, so it's not just the administrative burden of implementing this, it's about finding the most effective policy to provide assistance, and we would be open to all sorts of ways to provide aid, as we have, and I think if you review the reports that are on AEDC's website, there are numerous programs that have been quite successful in helping businesses respond to the pandemic and respond to the impacts of the emergency.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is, the hour is late, so I will try to be as brief as possible, but I echo the sentiments of Mr. Barron regarding this bill. I have, I have serious concerns that, one, we do have the $112 million of ARPA funds, but even before you get to those tax dollars that are flooding into Anarundel County to support businesses and COVID relief, we've also seen the federal government come out in force in early spring of 2020 with the Paycheck Protection Payments, with idle extensions. We've also seen the state of, and SBA has come out with all kinds of grants, and they keep coming. And then we've seen at the state level with the Maryland Relief Act, we've seen businesses benefit from unemployment tax relief, which cost, which cost our county in local revenue to the tune of about $13 or $14 million. So we've also, when I was speaking with some local business owners, one of the ideas was, funny enough, was a sales tax credit, which is part of the Maryland Relief Act. So some of these things are already in the works and have been doled out and continue to be. And so while we, at the end of the day, need to be able to rely on our, our tax revenue to pay our employees doing the work of this county, so I'd like, I feel the same as the administration, I don't think this is the right, the right solution to shoring up our small businesses in this, these challenging times. I do think we've all been advised on the portal that's been open about working with the administration to craft different programs to address some of the small businesses that maybe have fallen through those cracks of federal, state, or local relief. I know I have, I've had the opportunity to put some of my ideas forward, I know economic development has been engaged, so I don't think this is the right, the right solution. I guess I'm done.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recognize that the administration and I have philosophical differences, with the administration opposing property tax credits for business, so I get that. That being said, at this point, I will make a motion to hold this bill until the October 18th meeting for the opportunity to work on additional amendments with the Office of Finance.
Hang on one second, before anybody leaps to second. I think we have to hold the public hearing first, because the bill's been advertised. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7621. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive any testimony, Madam Chair.
Okay, and now the in-person hearing is open. Believe it or not, the same person signed up on everything that was on our agenda tonight and is not here, so I will not call her name again either, and I see no one who's decided to stand up and come down to the table, therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number 7621 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7621.
Bill Number 7621: An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes/ Credits: Business Entities Affected by a State of Emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, do you wish to introduce your current amendment now, or prefer to proceed with the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 7621 until October 18th, 2021?
The latter, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? Fiedler, second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 7621 to October 18th, 2021.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 7621 has been defeated.
Now, Mr. Volkey, do you wish to introduce your amendment number one or not?
No, Madam Chair, I withdraw.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7621.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Understanding that there was some more work that needed to be done, I have to say nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare. Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Bill Number 7621 has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4121.
Resolution Number 4121: Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Property Consisting of Between Approximately .62 Plus or Minus Acres and .765 Plus or Minus Acres Known as 443 Crane Highway, Glen Burnie, Maryland 21061, from HB Incorporated, Utilizing Funds From the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Daniels from Central Services, Ms. Anderson from Central Services, Mr. Phipps from DPW, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. We discussed this resolution at the work session. I've made a point not to call this the Hind Building, because it confuses folks, this is the other Hind Building. It is on Richie, in between Richie and Crane, up there in District 2. The county has leased this building since 2014. It is 16,800 square feet, and currently serves as the Department of Aging and Disabilities Northern Service Center, as well as holds space for Office of Information Technologies' Project Management Group. Both agencies have indicated a long-term desire to stay in the location. The owner of the building is looking to sell. The county's lease provides for right of first refusal, right of first refusal, it's late, I'm sorry. And this resolution we're bringing before you would help, or would allow the county to purchase the property, and to note that purchasing the property would reduce our operating budget expenditures by about $13,000 a month, which is what we pay in rent. So with that, I think probably mangled a bunch of that, but Ms. Anderson or Mr. Daniels, I'm sure can correct me, but we're happy to answer any questions. Acquiring this property will be good for accounting taxpayers long term.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Pickard.
I typically, thank you, Madam Chair. I typically like to reserve our land acquisition dollars for parks and rec, fields that I need in District 2, but I do appreciate the work of Department of Aging and OIT, so I'm all for it.
Let the record reflect. If no one else has any questions, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 4121. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive any submissions of testimony, Madam Chair.
Okay, and do we have anyone in this room who would like to testify on the resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing on Resolution Number 4121 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4121.
Resolution Number 4121: Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Property Consisting of Between Approximately .62 Plus or Minus Acres and .765 Plus or Minus Acres Known as 443 Crane Highway, Glen Burnie, Maryland 21061, from HB Incorporated, Utilizing Funds From the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
I don't envy you, Madam Secretary. Please call the roll on Resolution Number 4121.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
I'll just quickly comment. I congratulate the various departments who worked on this. I think it's smart government and efficient use of our tax dollars, so thank you. Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Resolution Number 4121 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4521.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, are we on Resolution 45 or is it 46? No? What am I missing here?
I have that we held 45 until today.
I'm sorry, that is a typo. It's Resolution 4621. We're talking about, I'm sorry, it is Resolution 45. That's the ethics one, right?
That's correct. Appointing Mr. Webb.
My apologies, I'm going to pull it out.
We held it. Remember, we held it, he had something to confirm first, so that's why we're here now.
I'm sorry, my notes were incorrect.
That's okay.
Resolution Number 4521: Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is our Coordinator for Boards and Commissions, Ms. Megan Brown from Office of Law. Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer is sticking with us. So as you recall, this was discussed at the previous council meeting, a question was raised as to whether Mr. Webb could continue to hold a position on the ACPS Ethics Board and serve at the same time. Ms. Brown unfortunately wasn't available that night, or she would have elbowed me when I said we didn't know. He intended to resign upon appointment. He has now resigned, so we believe we've rectified the issue. I think we spoke to his qualifications at the last meeting, but just to reiterate, has served on the ACPS Ethics Board, knows the issues, and I think several of you have served with him in other capacities, and know him to be an excellent addition to our Ethics Board. So with that, Megan is here now to correctly answer any questions you may have. So with that, Megan is here now to correctly answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think the only question I have is to confirm whether or not we held the, do we actually conduct the public hearing at the last meeting or not?
We couldn't because it was introduced and, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we could not introduce it and decided to vote on it right away. So since we delayed it to this meeting, I think we should probably just open a public hearing, just to be safe.
No harm. Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 4521. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything.
And do we have anyone who wishes to come speak? Seeing no one, of course, at this hour of night, who would be here? Okay. Then the public hearing on Resolution Number 4521 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4521.
Resolution Number 4521. Resolution appointing a member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Is there any discussion, any further discussion beyond the fact that everyone knows Mr. Webb? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4521.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution Number 4521 is adopted.
Thank you. Only two more to go, folks. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5021.
Resolution appointing a Charter Revision Commission.
Thank you. I'm just looking for my paper here.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Radvian?
Could I request to be added as a sponsor?
You may.
This is my oversight, not to have responded to that earlier, apparently.
Does anyone else who's not a sponsor, if you'd like to sponsor, now's a good time to say so? Otherwise, we just discuss this amongst ourselves because it's our resolution appointing the members of the Charter Revision Commission. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. District 7, this was my oversight too. Could I be added as co-sponsor?
You certainly may. So noted. Madam Chair? Yes, Ms. Fiedler?
May I also be added as co-sponsor?
Indeed, you may. And now the entire council.
Can we still read the vote?
Right. That's a question for you, Madam Parliamentarian. Okay. Okay, in all seriousness, if we have anything to say, I will just say as a sort of, on behalf of all of us, thank you to the seven people who have agreed to serve on the Charter Revision Commission. We're all going to be watching what you do very closely. We'll be very interested. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 5021.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5021 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5121.
Resolution Number 5121. Resolution designating Ellen Moss as the representative for the county council on the D.C. Metroplex BWI Community Roundtable.
And, Mr. Volkey, you are the sponsor of this resolution?
I am, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey. I ran into Ms. Moss. I was just telling Councilwoman Pickard at an event up in Jessup, I was up there for something, and I saw her, and she mentioned to me that she really, really was very, very interested to be the member on the BWI Community Roundtable as the council's designee. And she indicated that she wanted to ensure that the council had representation, and she had some concerns about that. So with that being said, I reached out to Ms. Corby, and we put together this resolution. So that is the impetus for this resolution. She has been the alternate member on the roundtable up to this point, and she has been attending the meetings. So I think she would be a good person. I think she previously, if I remember, was the rep at one time, and then she became the alternate, so this would now put her back to being the rep. So that's the basis for the resolution.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 5121.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5121 is adopted.
Madam? Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
I just had an opportunity to, after our discussion, this is going back to 7621. Would now be the appropriate time?
I suppose so, because I was about to call for any other business.
Okay, then, perfect timing. Just after going through Madam Auditor's notes and running some calculations, I would like to make a motion to recall the vote on Bill 7621, as I would like to make a change to my vote.
What was that?
My bill. The tax bill.
Is there a second?
Volkey, second.
Madam Parliamentarian, do we need five or four for this?
Two.
We are reconsidering the vote.
Reconsider the vote. The majority is the person in the winning side. She was on the winning side, so she can make the motion, just the majority vote.
But somebody from the prevailing side, as Mr. Volkey mentioned, it's a motion to reconsider the vote.
Right. And did the second need to be from the prevailing side? Does it?
This one is addressed in our rules, I'm pretty certain. Yeah. This is not a figure-it-out-by-Roberts-rules situation.
Point of order, Madam Parliamentarian. Do we need to re-vote if someone simply wants to change their vote on a bill?
I don't think so.
Right, I think you can just say you want to change their vote. Right, that's what I thought.
That's fine.
I don't think you need to have a re-vote.
Well, except...
It's definitely a vote differently, based on one person's desire to change.
That's fine. So, Ms. Fiedler, if you wouldn't mind withdrawing your motion to reconsider the vote and instead request that the record reflect that your vote be the opposite of what you voted.
Understood. I'm withdrawing my motion to re-hold the vote on Bill 7621 and would like to state for the record that I support with an aye.
Let the record reflect that Ms. Fiedler's vote on Bill 7621, sorry, I need glasses, apparently, has been changed from nay to aye.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
And that brings our tally to three in the affirmative, four in the negative. For the record.
And is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until October 12th, 2021, when we will first meet as the Board of Health and then go into our regular work session. And a very important reminder, this meeting will be virtual. Please check the council's website for more information. Good night.